I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting, actually special council work meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members present this evening are council members Kamara Sulek, CEO Delorco, Girba Rice, Mayor Pro Tem Dillon, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, Assistant City Manager Getzmann is here, City Treasurer Cole will not be with us, Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Briggs is here, along with PD Budget Analyst Terry. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Moved.
Moved by Girba as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to a public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment their question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments regarding the wastewater treatment rehabilitation project? The record will reflect there are none from audience members. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Easy enough. Then we will transition to the one and only discussion item of the evening, which again is the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. City Manager O'Toole, would you like to begin and then hand it over to Mr. Briggs and our consultant from Tetra Tech, Mr. Brian Rubel?
I think I'll just hand it straight over to Brian. He's got a nice presentation queued up, and then that will leave plenty of time for questions.
Excellent. Okay. Brian, very good. Whenever you're ready. And we are broadcasting the PowerPoint online, and it'll be shared with those who are watching remotely as well.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Yes, I probably have 10, 12 minutes of material. Should be plenty of time to answer questions, and by all means feel free to even stop me as I go if you prefer that. So I think we're, the status is we're making great progress, and that's what I hope to bring you up to speed on this evening. This is in a little different format than I was expecting, but I-
Yeah, it looks like it's almost a, well, it's not appearing to me as though this is a PowerPoint.
I think, sorry, I just put up this.
Maybe Mr. Goodman or-
I do have, I do have a video embedded in the PowerPoint, so I think we'll get the most out of it if I can run it within PowerPoint.
Do you have a-
Yeah, it should run right from here.
Oh, do you have any inputs though? Try this and see how it works.
Is that you, Brian?
Same thing, the rock. That's not me.
Okay, that's not your background?
That's its background. It just wasn't him climbing.
What's it say? Yes?
It says revert.
It says reset.
What's that one say?
All right, I'm going to have to extend it.
Why is it doing this?
I think the icon, second from right, is the PowerPoint.
Right here?
No.
Oh, wait, the other end, next to setting.
I don't have my reader.
Right there.
Right there?
No, one more.
Okay, I can't see. I don't have my readers on.
Right there.
Where is my mouse?
It's on that screen.
You might have to double-click it, or click it again, Ben.
Normally displays and you just drag it. And I can't get the mouse to come back up on this. It's not going to work.
Brian, do you still have AirTame on your laptop?
I didn't change it from last week.
Okay. Ben, I think he has our AirTame app. We could try that.
Not, we might have to go back to the original format and just kind of-
I could put it up USB too.
Take a couple more minutes and see if you can-
So if you open AirTame?
Let me get rid of this.
I'm sorry, go air.
AirTame. AI, yeah. You just start searching for it here. AIR. Yeah. See if you still have a, yep. Open up the app. Wow, wait, that's the executable. Did you download it? Here we go. So conference room, share screen.
Right there.
Yep.
Connecting.
Uh, let's see.
Lobby TV.
Uh, not the lobby, no. Oh, wait, yeah. Why are you not getting?
Can you, can you change these to the AirTame setting?
Nothing's happening. Nothing's happening, okay.
Let me put it on USB.
Yeah.
Or the USB, copy the PowerPoint onto the other machine.
Yeah. Yeah, we're getting, we're seeing the other two, but not this, the ones here.
Yeah, I don't know. Here, we can just get Mr. Rubel back his presentation.
Pretty large file. Might just take a second. More than a second, couple seconds.
Hold on real quick, let me see. It's showing, it should be okay. What's it under? That one right there?
I'm sorry, it's the 1-19 date, the big file. Right there.
Sure. Yeah, if anyone's hungry, we've got snacks over here. I think Terry made coffee.
It didn't close.
Are we still broadcasting?
I could.
The other one's there, you can just, you just have to scroll. That was just whatever format.
Yeah, we could use the other one while we're saving this one. I could come back.
Let's start with this one.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to use this one and-
Since December 2022.
No, that's not the right file.
PowerPoint begins to work, then I think that would be perfectly appropriate to transition to that.
Here we go. Yeah, they just sent it to me as a PDF. That must be one cool video.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just got the PDF.
Do you want a walkthrough video?
Let's try one more thing.
We can always send the video footage out later.
Yeah.
No, that's a PDF too. Yeah, all I have is PDFs of that presentation. I didn't get a PowerPoint.
Now, that looks correct.
Yeah, it's just a PDF though. It's not going to show, but yeah.
Yeah, all right. We're, we'll do the best we can with what we have.
Very good.
So I'm sorry for that delay. What we'll try to accomplish today is just summarize to you where the design effort stands and how the project is looking in formulation. Show you in specific a few of the processes as it relates to both the treatment plant, the site, neighboring impacts, things like that. I'll update you perhaps on the schedule for both design, construction, and maybe some funding aspects of that construction. So, a design process consists of meeting bi-monthly with your staff, between the consultant staff and city staff, share ideas, share goals, review investigations from the last meeting, and try to move the project closer to completion. Again, we talk about pros and cons of various alternatives, where things should be located, and share ideas like that. We've confirmed many major concepts. We started out the first month just validating the types of treatment processes, where they should be located, and pros and cons. That included some field trips. We, we took a day to go to the East Lansing wastewater plant. They had many similar elements that you will have at your plant. We also went to a plant in Livingston County, Genoa Osceola Township outside Brighton, and looked at a couple of processes that they have. So your staff in particular could look at it and evaluate whether it fit Celine's needs. We've completed surveying, soil borings, groundwater sampling, which is all necessary to be in the bid documents, and it helps guide the bid documents as well. Several things are still undetermined. I would call them finer points, like building materials. I'd like to talk about that on our next meeting on Thursday, and try to hone in on that and what works for Celine. Things like colors too of the building exteriors are not finalized. So I'll show you some neutral colors today, but it will change as we go along. The proposed project consists of these elements, and I think it'll be much clearer when I show you a graphic of the site. We talked about the Headworks building. That includes both a new influent pump station and a fine screen. The fine screen will protect both the pumps and all downstream processes. If we can get rid of that larger chunky material, that really causes some operation and maintenance headaches down the road, to leave that in. A wet weather storage tank, this again is needed for wet weather conditions. Will store this wet weather so it doesn't overwhelm the treatment process. And you actually had, you know, wet weather storage back in the 80s. You put one in, it didn't last, it wasn't in operation very long because it was open aired, and it was very close to home. We're going to, we'll have a new primary clarifier. That's also part of growth and peak flow management. One of the big parts of the project is your biological process are these rotating contactors that we've talked about many times. Very mechanically intensive, and we're going to convert that to an activated sludge process, which is more of a liquid process, where pumps are the primary element. Much easier to maintain a pump and service a pump than these very large, heavy rotating devices. Along with conversion to activated sludge, we'll need another secondary clarifier. Be more clear when I show you the pictures. Many miscellaneous things throughout the site. A new cover for the digester, some lighting improvements, a new roof at the administration building. Also, part of the five-year plan that we put together for the project plan was to improve the solids handling. Right now, it's digested and stored in tanks. We talked about converting and then applied to farm fields. We talked about converting to a screw press process where we would de-water it on-site, and thus it would be acceptable to landfills as a conversion. Staff have asked us to go ahead and design that here into this bidding phase, and we're going to do it as an alternate. So if the pricing is favorable, you will have the option to proceed with that earlier than four or five years out. If it's not favorable, we will just make a decision to postpone that. We will relocate a storage building. Currently, that sits on the site that we need for the new Headworks building. So that's, the storage building the plant uses to maintain equipment, and we're, we'll just, we need, they need that building. We'll just give it to them in a different spot. And staff have asked us to look at renewable energy ideas as we go along, and I'm going to show you a little bit of a, a very small solar field that will help reduce some of the electrical costs of the facility. So this is the site plan, and it's looking from southeast to northwest. You may see some buildings you recognize. The administration building is, the one there is a little bit of a taupe color, I guess. The parking lot's right there. So the new Headworks building here will be over to the west. These buildings are existing. This is the filter building. Over here on the southeast corner is one of your sludge storage tanks. So one of the new features is a digester tank, and then the, the tank cover, the tank is already there. The cover is 36 years old. It's steel. It is at the end of its life, and it slides up and down. And it also has mechanical requirements to it that are difficult. So we will put a fixed cover on that. That's what we decided as a team. But when you put a fixed cover on it, you still need to provide some room for the gases to expand and contract, and that will be in this little sphere right next to the digester tank. So that's, that's a new look for the plant. Right here is the new primary clarifier, and over here will be the relocated maintenance building over on the west. Here is the storage tank up in the northwest corner. That is partially above ground and partially below ground, and we've tried to keep the profile as low as we can to just minimize visual aesthetics to neighboring properties. Now, staff asked us for that to be in green. It's drawn in blue for now. I simply forgot to tell the artist to draw it in green. So I think next time you see it, it'll be green. This is the solar feature here. Right at the top of the, well, it's right at the footprint of the existing RBCs, if you've been to the plant. That will be vacated and opens up a space that we can put that in. Right here at the site of the existing storage tank, the decommissioned open air storage, will be the aeration tank. And I have some blowups of that. That'll be much clearer in a second. And then this is a building that will support the aeration. There are some pumps in there. There's some de-watering equipment in there, but, and then the main part of the western end of that is the solids handling, that screw press, that we will bid as an alternate. And that is where then the bio solids will be processed after digestion and hauled off the site. Over at the east end, the northeast corner, would be the third primary, secondary clarifier. And other miscellaneous improvements that really I can't depict quite well, lighting and some safety improvements throughout the site. So I'm going to, I'm going to blow up a few of these as we go along. I think that will help. And the video, if we don't have time, actually just kind of flies us around the site and zooms in on these things. So this is the Headworks building. There will be pumps at the north end of this, and the screens then at the south end. It will process that wastewater, take out by means of the screens, the solid material, and it will deposit it into a dumpster at ground level that can be wheeled out and taken to landfill. So that's a process currently that staff have to do by hand with rakes and pails and carry it up to the ground surface, climb slippery stairways. So that will all be automated. So it's delivered right to that dumpster right inside that building, and, and once a week or so, hauled off. This is a new generator at the foot of the Headworks building. Your generator is getting quite old. It is time to think about that. That's obviously a very important part of the process that you can continue to treat wastewater should the power fail. This is looking from north to south. Right at the north edge of the property, looking back towards the river, this is the aeration tanks or activated sludge tanks. Those are used interchangeably. So this, this replaces the RBCs again. These are deep pools of highly aerated water that a lot of biologic activity, mostly all the biologic activity takes place here, breaks down the organic material in the wastewater where it's settled out in a clarifier.
Let me ask, is that a new, is that a new building?
I'm sorry?
Is that a new building in front of-
It is. It is. And there are a series of pumps primarily in this building to move that water back and forth. It has recycled a number of times from start to finish before it's released.
Is there a reason why it's towards the center without being towards the neighborhood so that you could put the open ponds? I don't know if there's going to be any potential odor or anything coming from those.
From the, the tanks?
Yes.
I knew that would be the question I received today. It, the, the good thing about activated sludge is highly aerated. There is a tremendous amount of oxygen imposed on this wastewater, and that in itself fights odors. I, I, there generally is a small musty smell in this area. I would not label it as a foul smell. And that, that oxygen that's added is what keeps that under control.
So it neutralizes the hydrogen sulfide gas?
It prevents the hydrogen sulfide from being formed because of the oxygen in there. The bacteria don't strip the sulfur compounds out of the wastewater.
I see. Okay. Is there a reason why the building, though, is where it's located instead of on the backside?
I'm sorry, as opposed to west or east of there, or-
I guess I'm trying to understand where the neighborhood is basically where that backs up, because that's where the RBCs are.
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. We do need to be able to get trucks into that building, so there is some consideration about its location.
It does need to be close to the aeration tanks. I can't put that building really at the foot of the hill, so to speak.
And those aeration tanks are going where the current equalization basin used to be, that big hole-
That is correct.
-where the trees are growing out of today.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, one of the, I think maybe the, the issue is, right here is the current RBCs. So I have to, we have to construct this tank and have it operational before we decommission the RBCs.
Understand.
Yeah.
It's just helping, you just actually explain more where it's located, thanks.
Yeah, so we have to build it, operate, yeah, if, if the RBCs could be taken offline tomorrow, we could slide this south 60 or 70 feet, but I have to keep that operational.
And it's essential that that is an open pool, not something that has an enclosure over the top of it.
That is what's done 99% of the time. There's a tremendous amount of airflow, gas flow, up through here. To, so to enclose it and reroute all of that to, to somewhere else really is a tremendous cost. Actually, activated sludge is used as an odor control method for many foul odors on-site. Other, other treatment plants, including Ypsilanti, will route some foul air through this aeration tank because the bacteria in there does such a good job of fighting odor.
Let's actually, if I may, Mr. Rubel, let's, let's, because we, we lost a little bit of time due to our technical difficulties. Let's hold questions until the end of your presentation.
Okay.
And then I'm going to start to my, to my left and then to my right. We'll try to do at least one round of questions. Maybe we'll have time for two, but of course, there'll be ample opportunity in the future to be used on these issues as well.
And I don't have a tremendous amount of material, so we appreciate the visual aesthetics from, the neighbors are important as well. In particular, this tank will be fairly close to the Monroe Street homes. We chose to sink a portion of it below ground so we could keep, keep it from hulking over the neighborhood, and we're going to use earth grading and landscaping to also attempt to camouflage the impact of that tank on neighbors. So this is a rendering of-
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we do need to be able to get trucks into that building, so there is some consideration about its location.
It does need to be close to the aeration tanks. I can't put that building really at the foot of the hill, so to speak.
And those aeration tanks are going where the current equalization basin used to be, that big hole?
That is correct.
Where the trees are growing out of today.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, one of the, I think maybe the issue is, right here is the current RBCs. So I have to, we have to construct this tank and have it operational before we decommission the RBCs.
Understand.
Yeah.
It's just helping you just actually explain more where it's located, thanks.
Yeah, so we have to build it, operate, yeah. If the RBCs could be taken offline tomorrow, we could slide this south 60 or 70 feet, but I have to keep that operational.
And it's essential that that is an open pool, not something that has an enclosure over the top of it?
That is what's done 99% of the time. There's a tremendous amount of airflow, gas flow, up through here. So to enclose it and reroute all of that to somewhere else really is a tremendous cost. Actually, activated sludge is used as an odor control method for many foul odors on-site. Other treatment plants, including Ypsilanti, will route some foul air through this aeration tank because the bacteria in there does such a good job of fighting odor.
Let's actually, if I may, Mr. Rubel, let's, because we lost a little bit of time due to our technical difficulties. Let's hold questions until the end of your presentation.
Okay.
And then I'm going to start to my left and into my right. We'll try to do at least one round of questions. Maybe we'll have time for two, but of course, there'll be ample opportunity in the future to be used on these issues as well.
And I don't have a tremendous amount of material, so. We appreciate the visual aesthetics from, the neighbors are important as well. In particular, this tank will be fairly close to the Monroe Street homes. We chose to sink a portion of it below ground so we could keep it from hulking over the neighborhood, and we're going to use earth grading and landscaping to also attempt to camouflage the impact of that tank on neighbors. So this is a rendering of what it would look like from homes along Monroe looking east towards the plant.
And that's the, I'm sorry, you already told us that. That's the one that's going to be painted green, correct?
I'm sorry, that's the one?
That tank is going to be painted green.
The staff have asked that to be painted green, yes. Thank you. This is not going to be a very large solar field, but it will help nonetheless, and it steps forward a little bit sustainability of this facility. So we do have that empty spot that the RBCs will vacate, and that seems ideal. Top of the hill wide open to sunlight, all that abundant sunlight we get in Michigan this time of year. The schedule is right on track. We delivered 30% drawings about eight or nine days ago. This is the 30% drawing set right now, so it's 135 pages, and it will continue to grow. We had a very exciting meeting in this very space last Thursday where it was not an official part of the bid process, but we wanted to get the word out to contractors now that Celine has a very significant project coming up, and please reserve space on your bidding calendar for this project. We had nine very qualified contractors attend, which was very exciting in this environment. I would say we had three of the four largest municipal wastewater contractors in the state attend that meeting. So the word is out. We're excited that they will keep us in mind as we get closer, and that is in May. We will advertise for bids in May. We will open bids at the end of June. Everything is a little compressed. We'd love to give these bidders two or three months, but we feel we can pull that off in that time period. We will be back in early July to review the bids with you and consider an award. And after we do that in July, it takes six or eight weeks to go through the loan closing process. That will be wrapped up in September, and we will be off and running then in September with an official notice to proceed. That's what NTP stands for, for contractors. The other date is the completion date, and we're keeping late 2025 as our placeholder now. We are soliciting some feedback from vendors regarding lead times, and I wish I could report to you that the supply chain has eased, but it still is very tight, and some parts of this will take over a year from order before it arrives. So there is, I think, a fairly good chance, when I give you the next update, that that completion date could sneak into 2026, just due to that fact alone. As far as funding goes, we continue to communicate with the state revolving loan fund folks in Lansing. As you're aware, we applied for a small grant that could help. We have not heard yet on that grant with the state of Michigan. The Ferguson Group in Washington, D.C., is gearing up to help with the earmark process this spring. I have a meeting with them in about 10 days to kind of finalize their marching orders. Thus far, they feel that that's really the primary federal opportunity for funding, is that earmark process through the Congress, and they're the right people to do that. So they're going to be off and running on that in no time. Next steps. I will be happy to keep you updated anytime you'd like. I don't, I'm not far away. And the good news is the costs are tracking right on our previous projections. And again, keep in mind, we are going to bid some alternates. So if costs may appear higher, it's because we're pulling parts of it forward for your consideration, and we will be able to cut things back if our budget gives us a surprise. And I will leave it up to you to use the rest of your time.
Very good. Before we transition to questions, just, well, not only for your edification, Mr. Rubel, but councils and the public. I think it was your second to last page on funding. I did want to confirm through the city manager's office that we have reached out to schedule a joint meeting with Representative Braybeck, who's our state representative, and Senator Irwin, our state senator, to debrief them on this project. I would likely share with them the PowerPoint and also request state funding to assist with the necessary rehabilitation. Also on Friday, late Friday, our new district liaison from Congresswoman Dingell's office reached out, and we'll be scheduling a meeting with him and his superior, Debbie's district director, sometime in the next probably month or so. We have a wide array of issues we want to discuss with them, but federal funding for wastewater rehabilitation will be top on that list. And then I think we have consensus internally that we'll also be applying as soon as the application is available for funding through the EPA, which you and I discussed, I believe, in the second or third quarter of 2022, when you shared with me some information that Congressman Slot can input out to our constituents.
Yes, yes.
So we have discussed that, the city manager and I have discussed that directly with Senator Peters' office, and I think that's a revenue stream that we will attempt to leverage as well, so.
Outstanding.
Yep, just a little bit of additional information as it pertains to that, the second to last page of your presentation. That was very helpful. Thank you for the update. We will do a round of questions. I'm going to need to keep everyone to a pretty tight five minutes in order to get through the entire group. I'm going to start to my left and into my right. Councilmember Rice, you're relatively new to this, so I'd like to give you first crack at questions to Mr. Rubel or staff. And before I defer to you, councilmember, Mr. Briggs, anything you'd like to add for the record at this time?
Uh, just stuff.
Very good. Councilmember Rice, you have five minutes.
No questions from me in particular. I really appreciate these updates. I suppose I do have a bit of a question, and this may actually pertain more to council than to your presentation. As far as these updates go, continuing to update the public, is this presentation available to the public? Do you have any sort of trimmed-down back sheet that we could share with the public in addition to this recording meeting?
I would be happy to share a consolidated version of this with the city manager, and I'm sure she would jump on that.
Yeah, so we do also, I had Pierre Generalis Massey create a dedicated project page for that, for this, this week. That is up and available on the city's website under Construction Projects. That includes this presentation and some basic facts. We're also working on a communication that I hope to go out in the next week, week and a half, to residents that are directly adjacent to the site with similar information, asking them to sign up for an email list.
That is perfect. That was all I had. Thank you very much for this.
It's my pleasure.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Del Orco, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I was wondering about the Headworks Building. Is that a complete tear-down rebuild of the structure that's already there, or are you making use of what's already there and upgrading it?
It is a separate building, off to the side.
Okay.
It was, it would have been, it would have been impossible to put the screens inside the old building.
Impossible?
Yes.
Too big, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we finding another use for the existing structure, or is it just kind of being knocked over?
Right now, we are not putting it to use. It would be removed from the site.
Okay, all right. And then what happens to the existing abandoned trickle filter wells?
Yes, those are also going to be demolished and removed during, as part of this project.
So we're making as much use of the surface area as we can?
Yes. That footprint would be needed for a future expansion. It will take one of our primary, our new primary clarifier, and then that space would be available for a future expansion.
Okay, so then this phase of the project doesn't incorporate any kind of expanded footprint of real estate?
No, you are not moving outside your current footprint.
So the fencing that's there is, everything's within the current fencing lines?
With one exception. Although it is on the platted wastewater site, the fence at the northwest corner will have to be moved out for the storage tank.
Aha, over by where the park abuts to the property.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
We did some research. That was platted for the wastewater plant, but the fence was built inside, so we are going to have to move that fence northwest so that we can put the tank there.
Like, how many feet would you say?
Oh, 150, maybe?
Oh, quite a bit, okay, okay.
Yeah. That tank's about 100-foot diameter, so.
Gotcha.
That plus a little bit around it, yeah.
And you mentioned briefly in your slides, electrical upgrades. Does that incorporate an automated system to where the new generator will come on automatically without the necessity for men on-site when there is a power outage or power failure?
That is correct.
Okay, good, good. When we have the new fine automated bar screens, I assume that means we'll be removing a great deal more rags and things that aren't supposed to be going through the system to begin with. Is that going to be classified as hazardous waste, and is there a separate procedure to dispose of that from what we currently have, or is it extra fees through waste management?
It is not hazardous waste.
It's not hazardous waste?
It can go to a municipal landfill.
Okay. And then the solar feature, is, what is that designed to power?
It will offset some of the energy required to add this air, this oxygen, to the activated sludge tanks.
For the aeration?
That's correct.
Okay. And my last question is, does the new design incorporate any kind of cogeneration process where instead of us burning off the methane gas through a flare, we are actually using that to power some aspect of the digestion of the plant?
As of right now, we have not talked about that. There are technologies to do that. They are always evolving. In fact, I think the Celine Plant used that technology about 25, 30 years ago, and at the time, it was not very reliable, and so it was discontinued. It is getting better. There are some plants doing that. There is still time for us to think about that as a team, but it's also something you could retrofit and add.
At a later time, yeah. It always seemed wasteful to me that we just burn off that gas.
It's not a perfect gas. It's a very humid gas, and so it's very corrosive, and that's why many communities discontinued that, because that corrosiveness just requires a tremendous amount of maintenance to keep that equipment going.
So you'd have to de-humidify the gas before you could utilize it?
You do indeed.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. It's almost exactly five minutes. Gearbaugh, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Rubel, there's, you know, new technology, and I wanted to make sure what we're implementing this time, because the Nova filters were new dectology and basically failed. Do we have any testing and protocol to which we're going to be assessing what technology we implement?
There will be a demonstration requirement in this contract that the equipment needs to operate successfully for a period of time, which I believe is somewhere around 60 days. And it will need, every piece of equipment will need to meet that performance requirement.
But that's prior to when we would award it and actually include it in the project?
That will be before you accept it and make final payment on it. As far as new technology here, I do not believe there's anything that I would call novel. Things are fairly well accepted in the industry that we have outlined here.
Now, when you mentioned disposal of our existing equipment and some of that, removing some of it, is any of that subject to EPA concerns or aspects?
Much of it will have to be tested. Lead paint, asbestos concerns, there's ash in a bin that we will have to test before we can take it to a landfill. These are on schedule and will not be costly or onerous tests to perform.
As you mentioned, you know, we'll have a backup generator, but are we also talking about putting in a second main power line into the facility? That was an item that was identified in our risk management.
We haven't talked about a second line. Generally, a plant will have either a single line and a generator or two lines from different substations. As of right now, we've been talking about a single line and a generator.
What items are being upgraded or amenities added for staff and such? I see there's like a, looks like a pavilion on this picture, and...
Well, if we had the correct slide, it would have been a much more modest, just picnic table or two. There's a number of safety improvements being made in accordance with past safety studies. I'm not sure how you find amenity necessarily, but...
Well, improving the, I want to make sure that the bathrooms are modern, the kitchen is, the lounge facility, that stuff is being updated because all of it's from the late 1940s or early 50s.
The decision on the admin building was to postpone those improvements to a later phase, so there is not a lot of amenity inside that building in this phase. Lighting, lighting, yes. The roof, yes, but restrooms and other interior design elements did not make it into this phase.
And understanding there will be a new maintenance schedule and a operation manual developed, so that we'll have that all in place once this becomes online?
Yes.
Actually, while we're switching between operations?
Yes, that will be part of a later phase to do that, but before the job is complete, you will have an updated O and M manual, and we will have maintenance schedules for all the new equipment, yes.
And then two last questions. What other staff was participating? Do we have all of our staff participating beyond just our superintendents?
I will say a cross-section of staff have participated at various times. I probably should turn it over to your leadership here to talk about how they have been engaging their staff, but I have worked with most of them at some point in this process.
We'll wait for that later. And then one last question that I had was regarding the septic hauling building. What's happening with that building?
The direction we recently got was to look at converting that to a facility that can accept vector waste that your DPW generates and needs to dispose of. So as of right now, we are on a track to remove the septic building and use that for municipal operations.
And then the last thing, if we could have also the new increased capacity numbers and whatever else this plant's going to be achieving as a result of these improvements, also they have that information available for the public?
Absolutely. I will make sure, that is written down, I will make sure the manager has that to summarize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Briggs, would you care to respond to Councilmember Gearbaugh's question about how staff is being engaged as it relates to the forthcoming rehabilitation of the project?
Certainly. We've had anywhere from two to four, or yeah, two to four staff at different meetings. It kind of depends on who's here and what, you know, processes we're having to operate, but we had, I think we had three maybe in the last meeting that we've had talking about this wastewater plant. So, you know, we are trying to encompass as many as we can.
And they feel they have the opportunity to voice their wants and desires?
Yep. They have a copy of this in the break room that they're thumbing through and, you know, giving our, giving back feedback on, you know, yes, no, whether they like it, don't like it, that kind of thing.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Mr. Rubel, a number of my questions have already been asked by councilmembers Del Orco and Gearbaugh, so I won't take much time. I do want to follow up on some comments that my colleague, Mr. Del Orco, just articulated. So first, as it relates to the current RBC area, which is to be replaced by a number of things, including some solar panels. Again, the rendering is not on the screen. Is there opportunity for that to be expanded if we deemed appropriate and we had the financial resources to front the cost?
To expand the solar generation portion of that site?
Yeah.
Yes, we have not occupied every square inch available to do that. We thought starting with a more modest effort would be the place to start with that.
The reason I bring that up is that that's something that I strongly support. I think one deficiency, if we look citywide within our entire municipal portfolio, is we can and should be doing more in the ensuing years to leverage renewables, be better stewards of our local environment ecosystem. So if there's an opportunity to expand solar generation on-site, I think that's great. To Mr. Del Orco's point, if there's ways in which other energy can be harnessed, saved, conserved, and would benefit our bottom line, I'm all for it. So perhaps you and your team and associates and other stakeholders can have a more focused discussion on that point at one of your future project meetings.
Absolutely.
And then my last, it's not a question, but a, a point rather. Councilmember Rice may mention or alluded to the importance of keeping the public engaged. So in addition to a dedicated page on our website, direct mailings, maybe some emails, you don't have the, the timeline for the ensuing six months on the screen at the moment. But I think it would be helpful to do another one of these meetings sometime probably in the next, maybe three to four months. So we can iron out a date at, at a later point. But I think for the public's benefit, for council's benefit, for the entire team's benefit, to prepare another presentation and public discussion at a, at a work meeting, I think that's, it's most conducive in a session like this. Sometime maybe in the late spring, early summer would be great.
Yeah, I believe the current schedule calls for us to do that just before we go out to bid again.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Very good. I'll look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Uh, Councilmember Dillon, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'll be as brief as possible. Mr. Rubel, would there be any opportunity to take a current rendering of the plant and do an overlay of your proposed plan? So basically taking like this one and then putting your diagram over it so we can sort of see that shift in, in the footprint and sort of see the expansion of it? Because it's, when I look at this drawing of the current existing plan, what I do see is I think what Mr. Delorko is talking about, which is that deep depression, which is where we're going to extend into. And just sort of understanding where that is in relation to homes, the park and stuff such. So that would be very helpful moving forward. All of the buildings and such that you have in the proposed site plan that you had shown us, are those all in Phase One? Are those all things that are going to be done?
Yes. Everything that I talked about except, well, the only thing that we've really accelerated is sludge storage, which would be, uh, or excuse me, not sludge, uh, screw pressing the, the sludge, dewatering it, which would be in a corner of this building right here. I mean, we're even thinking that the right thing to do is to build the building today, and then we could put the equipment in as an, in a future year if we can afford it this spring.
Okay.
So yes, everything that I've talked about, except for dewatering in this building, is part of Phase One.
Okay, I appreciate that. The next question I have is what's not depicted, and I know that's sort of a very generic drawing, is the, all of the odor abatement piping. Are we still going to be using all of that?
That's an excellent question. Uh, yes, we, we have to maintain that equipment with a few modifications. The Headworks building needs odor control. It's a very odorous process. Our calculations show that we can, we're going to be abandoning the current Headworks building. So we have the opportunity to put the new Headworks building back, back in its place, so to speak, for, for odor control. So we're going to connect that to the existing bio scrubber. Likewise, the RBCs that sit up here have a carbon scrubber, which I think you just replaced the carbon on here recently. Right now, we are determining whether we can route the storage tank ventilation through that. So we're trying to reuse what you already have. One of these processes, either this clarifier or the Headworks, will need a, a new odor control system, depending on how the calculations turn out. So we, we need to reuse what you have, and then at least one process, we need to add a, a new odor control system.
So but all of the current, like above-ground piping going from place to place will still remain? It may just shift a bit? So none of it can be moved underground or anything at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay.
The, the, the exception would be the RBC, which has a lot of overhead ductwork, which will go away when the RBC goes away.
Okay. I'll stop there in the evening to keep time for others.
Very good. Mr. Seal, you have five minutes.
Are we going to keep the Nova filters?
Yes. In this phase, we are.
Okay. Is that the tank in the middle, the vertical tank, the white one? Is that an odor scrubber there?
That's the bio scrubber.
Bio scrubber?
Yeah, and, and that will remain. That has a lot of useful life left in it.
That's the carbon, that's what we call a rocket ship now?
Yes, it does look like a rocket ship.
All right. Is this dome down here in the lower right corner, is that solid or is that expandable?
Uh, it is a membrane dome, so it is inflated by air, but it stays roughly the same diameter. There is a second membrane inside of it that goes up, that expands and contracts due to the volume of gas.
Okay.
To, to an observer, that will always look the same.
All right. And then your, your bubbler tanks up there at the far north end, are those like the ones, when we go over to the west side of the state along I-96, between Grand Rapids and Muskegon, there is a large sewage plant there, and they have open tanks that are continually bubbling. Would that probably be with this process?
I, if you see bubbling, it, it is indeed the oxygen, the air being added to the wastewater. So yes, that is the same process.
And we've never noticed an odor there along the freeway, and it's right adjacent to the freeway.
I'm glad to hear that. Yep. Because that's, that's what that is. Yes.
That's all I have here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seal. Uh, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, you have five minutes.
All right. I'll also be very quick. There are many good questions that were happily answered. But remind me, going back to the activated sludge, I'm glad we're getting rid of the RBCs, those, those pools, do you say that they are covered in what the safety is for staff or anybody falling in them? It's hard to tell from the pictures, but it sure looks...
These are not covered. There are railings that will prevent, that, I don't say prevent, but it certainly discourage a, a person from falling in. There will be, uh, life preservers and so forth around the area.
Okay.
Good questions. Pretty, pretty standard.
All right. I feel good about that. And then the, the solar panels, what's the break even on, on those? And what will that, what will those power?
Yeah, you know, Michigan, you know, we, we don't see the sun here for many months, it seems like. We have not calculated the break even, but it, it is fairly extensive for solar. Doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do, but I, I can't tell you it's going to pay for itself in five or six years. It, it probably will be longer than that.
I'm all for renewable and for solar energy. We'd just like to have a, a good idea on, you know, what their cost. I know they're, I know they're expensive and what the break even is. And I think that's some good information that, you know, the community would like to know as well, that that's not just an extra, you know, bell or whistle that looks good, but hey, this is saving, this is saving us all money.
I'll see if we can make an estimate for you.
All right. Thank you. Can I yield my time?
Very good. Uh, Mr. Gearbaugh, you have one last question before you adjourn?
Yeah, real quick. What environmental assessments are I doing in terms of, now that you just mentioned it, at the water, will we be running 24/7 in a trickle in those aerators? Will we be assessing sound impact and some of those issues relating to neighborhoods?
Uh, the, the main sound from that is actually from the blower that introduces the air into that. I mean, those are, those can be fairly loud, but those are inside the building, and the, the building envelope will muffle that from getting out.
We don't anticipate any more impact in terms of what the current sound is and some of the other items that are going on?
Well, there is an environmental assessment being done to prepare for future, future funding. So, you know, there's been a habitat evaluation, wetland evaluation, flood plains, all of that. Again, the sound, sound being the other one, will be designed for within that building to prevent it from escaping.
Okay. I just want to make sure we understand what's coming forward so that we don't have a reaction at the end of the project and not understand what we're facing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Real quick, Mr. Seal, because I want to make sure we have ample time for our guests from the county to, to hook up to our system because they have a PowerPoint. I'll be at seven.
This three-bay garage right there at the, yes, is that maintenance, future maintenance garage?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Rubel, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
For sharing this presentation online and with our constituents, and we look forward to, to, to future interactions with you on this issue, and we'll look forward to another formal presentation in the spring. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at, I have, 6:58.
So moved.
Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of adjourned at 6:58 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Coes say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned. We will start promptly after seven, as soon as our guests from Washoe County have their PowerPoint hooked up.
How are you, Mayor?
I'm good, Zach. Adding, or if you want to have a mention of the reports in the Bronx. On yourself. Good. Good.
To order, if you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated and there are copies of the agenda on the back table along with a sign in sheet. We would encourage you to both sign in and take a copy of the agenda. There are also hearing devices on the back table if you require them. Roll call. Members present this evening are council members Kamara Sulek, Del Orco, CEO Girba Rice, Mayor Protam Dillon, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, Assistant City Manager Getzmann, Community Development Director Harrington, Treasure Cole is absent, Police Chief Radzik is with us, DPW Director Shurles is here, along with Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and City Engineer Humphris along with Sergeant Volter, and at least one other employee, Budget Analyst Terry, and there may be others if I missed you, my apologies. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. There are going to be several items discussed under reports and announcements. I did want to add, under that section, Maple Ave crosswalk, because I believe there are a number of citizens here who would like to speak to that issue. We won't be discussing the matter until the very end of the agenda, but if you are unable to stay and you'd like to make a three-minute statement at the top of our meeting, we would welcome that.
Move is amended.
The move by CEO then is amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Always say nay. I have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? You'll have three minutes once you begin.
Mary Hess, I hope I get this in three. There is a truck purchase that I would hope for $128,000, and I am asking that the city put in the amount of money in the motion when they are purchasing something on the city's behalf. The other one is two ordinances. The one is 23 through 16, as far as eliminating the two-story regulation we have at this point. Years and years ago, when I was on council and planning, we talked about this, and we didn't have a ladder truck at that time to go three stories, and we still don't have a ladder truck at the fire department, nor do we have any people trained on it. We do have a, what do you call, reciprocal with Pittsfield Township, but that, of course, would be that if they're available and whatever. And the time. Time is very important with a fire or an emergency. I guess I would ask, if this is very, very important to be done, handled tonight, or if can be referred to the fire department for their critique and recommendation. This is their specialty, and that's why we're very proud of our fire department, and of course, their opinion is very important. The other is the ordinance 848, increasing density. I guess I get concerned when we're talking about third floor and density and the firewalls, as far as the police to the fire department again, as far as making sure that we are doing health, safety, and welfare that is promised on behalf of the citizens that you represent. And I, there were reasons why this was done years ago, and I still have a problem with the increased density and the third floor. Definitely would hope that you would refer to the fire department for their critique. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? You'll have three minutes once you begin.
Mary McCauley from Maple Oaks, and we were very excited to hear that in the construction on Maple, there's going to be a continuation of the sidewalk on the east side of Maple that will connect us down to bushes and to that side of town, and also the citizens and the children from the apartments and from Echo and Maple Cove to our side. What we're concerned about is the crosswalk there. There's a painted crosswalk and signs, and it does little good to provide for safety for our community to cross over there, especially during school opening and closing at the middle school. And so we're asking that you consider what it would take to have an enhanced crosswalk there, and I understand it's not in the budget for the construction of the road, but we would like to know what is the path that we need to take in order to see that that take place, so that we can cross that street safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? You'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay. This is Susan Yuhas. I live on Marcano Court. I'm just kind of wondering, why do we need three-story buildings? I mean, why is there, is there, I mean, we seem to have gotten along pretty well without them, and it would mean an increase in what we have to do with the fire department. I don't know that we need them.
Thank you. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? The record will reflect there are none. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written communiques in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their comments right at this time? Very good, thank you. Then we will transition to a presentation from Washtenaw Metro Dispatch regarding dispatch services. I believe Chief Radzik and Michelle Noonan will be taking the lead on this. Chief, would you like to introduce our guests and then turn it over to them? And let me lay a few ground rules here. So we are simply asking our guests some questions. They're going to be talking about operations at Metro Dispatch. As the city manager had previously communicated, excuse me, we are attempting to identify maybe two or three times in which council members can go over and tour Metro Dispatch and talk to the employees there about the operation, about the service. We're not developing consensus or debating the issue today. I will note, though, for the record, we do want to move forward on this matter. There's additional points that need to be evaluated and some analysis that needs to be done, but we need to develop consensus on the future of dispatch services, likely by the end of this first quarter. So we'll be looking for consensus sometime in February or March of 2023. Chief Radzik, the floor is yours if you'd like to introduce our guests.
Sure. I haven't seen this presentation either, but this is Rocky Noonan from Metro Dispatch and Jeff Poynier. I'll let them give you their background.
Very good. Please. And we are recording tonight, so make sure you speak into the microphone and make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
It is. Very good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Chief Radzik pointed out, my name's Rochelle Noonan. I'm the Emergency Services Director for the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. With me here is Jeff Poynier. He's the dispatch manager. Just to give you a little bit of background, I've been with the sheriff's office for 20 years. All 20 years has been spent in the dispatch center, starting out as a dispatcher, a trainer, a shift leader, supervisor, manager, and now the director. So 911 is what I know. Okay? So just a brief overview of Metro Dispatch, hopefully to give you a little bit more information as you're weighing your options and to make ultimately an overall informed decision. So Metro Dispatch is the largest public safety answering point in Washtenaw County. We dispatch for law enforcement only. Metro Dispatch currently provides 911 dispatch services for 10 police agencies in the county, serving 96% of Washtenaw County's population. Those agencies are the following: Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, Michigan State Police, and Northfield Police Department. We've been dispatching for them since about 1990. We then acquired in the mid-'90s DNR and Metro Parks. In 2010, the City of Ypsilanti Police. In 2012, we established Metro Dispatch with the acquisition of Ann Arbor Police Department. Pittsfield Police in 2018, Washtenaw Community College Public Safety in 2020, and most recently, Mylan Police Department in July of '22. We facilitate fire and EMS requests by transferring to secondary PSAPs, and more often than not, that's HVA here in Washtenaw County. Just to give you the full scope of, this is a map of Washtenaw County. The entities we do not currently dispatch for for police are the City of Chelsea, the City of Celine, University of Michigan, and Eastern Michigan University. For any of those that are not familiar with 911 operations, basically, a call comes in to the 911 center. It is answered by a call taker. They then enter the 911 information into the computer system. At the same time it is entered into the system, the dispatcher can pull it up on their screen, who then takes the information and sends out the appropriate resources. You'll also see down at the bottom, there's also referrals to HVA, and then also lean operator. We'll get more into lean here shortly. The new Emergency Services Communication Center is centrally located in the county, about Zeb Road and I-94. We opened the doors in December of 2021, so we've been there just over a year in our new facility. It was built and designed with room to grow. We have 18 positions. There's currently five to eight staff members on a shift, depending on the hour of day and if there's any home University of Michigan football games. We're generally going to increase staffing or for something such as, you know, inclement weather, we'll have an extra call taker on. We handle approximately 1,000 emergency and non-emergency calls daily. We receive and process over 250 calls for service for the agencies that we dispatch for annually. Our main radio is divided into Metro East and Metro West operations to account for a better dispatcher-to-officer ratio, and then also just to divide the county mostly in half as best as we can. This is a whole long list of partnerships and resources of different agencies and services that we interact with on a daily basis. I will certainly not read all of them, but you can kind of just get a snapshot. So contracting with the sheriff's office for Metro Dispatch services, we would obviously meet with city and city administration as well as police administration to determine what the scope of services look like, but it would certainly entail emergency call answering 24/7, 365 days a year, law enforcement dispatching, also then lean and NCIC, which basically what that is, is officer pulls, a person over on a traffic stop, they go into their computer, and they either talk with us on the radio or get on their computer on their laptop and run the person through lean and NCIC determinants, whether they're a valid driver, personal protection order, conditional bonds, making sure they're not a missing person, all of that kind of background information. Also, we would be then administering the PSAP training funds received to support dispatch operations. The state has very specific training requirements. The sheriff's office would be responsible for furnishing all materials and labor necessary to take on dispatching for the city, as well as we would treat emergency calls from the City of Celine with equal priority to the other agencies that we dispatch for. Obviously, we would provide the city with CAD information regarding emergency police calls received for the city and share with the city all complaints received regarding Celine calls for service, investigate the complaints, and partially examine all the factual information, then provide dispositions for any complaints that we do receive, and certainly any other services agreed to by the parties. For all the agencies that we contract with, we provide them performance metrics as part of the contract. This includes annual, quarterly, and monthly reports. Monthly reports consist of the following: just several different reports, just to kind of give you a snapshot summary over the month, and then quarterly, we send out command and citizen surveys, as well as any complaints, internal and external, that we receive. This is just a sample of the command survey. So we send surveys monthly to the command for the agencies that we dispatch for. They fill them out, turn them back into us, and we compile and then send them out quarterly. So on a scale of one to five, you see what our average ranking is from the command, based on the categories that we send out to them. And very similar is the citizen survey results. So citizens that have actually called 911 or a 10-digit non-emergency number are surveyed with a list of questions and then rate us in the same categories. The earliest possible contract execution that we could do for the City of Celine would be sometime first quarter of next year, and that is mostly due in part because we're hiring communications operators right now. We have seven, possibly eight vacancies, mostly because we had five retirements last year alone and one promotion. So we need to get to a place where we're a little bit more stable as far as employment goes with enough full-time communications operators. The length of the contract would be determined for a couple of reasons. One, we're currently in the process of hiring dispatch consultant to look at a 10-year strategic development plan, based on national best practices and in alignment with the sheriff's office mission and operational philosophy. They will also be assessing Metro Dispatch existing operations and feasibility of future growth. This is just a couple of pictures. Obviously, if the tour was something that came to fruition, you would obviously see the dispatch center in person. This is a large video wall that we have at the front of the center. The left side is comprised of partnership with Washtenaw County Road Commission, traffic cameras, then we have weather, news, and then the far right side, our security cameras in and throughout our building. Just a picture of the center itself, and then a close-up of one of the workstations. Any questions?
Very good. Appreciate that. Would your colleague care to share anything for the record?
No, I'll just introduce myself, Jeff Poynier. I've been a dispatch manager here for about a year with the sheriff's office for just over 15.
Excellent. Appreciate your time. It was excellent presentation. We will do a round of questions. I'll give each of my colleagues five minutes. Earlier this evening during our work meeting, I started to my left. I'll again start to my left with Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Rice, you have five minutes. Questions for either our guests or city staff?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think this gives us a really great view of your operations and gives us some great information to make our decisions. One question that I have for you is, you did mention that you have a lot of vacancies due to five retirements. What is your retention, just in general terms, in keeping folks on staff?
I honestly, I can't think of someone who left, other than a deputy that we had transitioned into dispatch. He transferred in and then ultimately decided on out-of-state employment. Other than that, it's a matter of people leave on their own prior to passing training. But the last, I can't even think of any, in the last several years, people stay.
Generally high satisfactory, if you want to say.
Correct.
Wonderful to hear.
Yep.
Secondly, so do you have any information that you can share with us from some of your most recent acquisitions? Like, would you be able to provide city council with some of those survey results in a little bit more detail, or maybe some comments, or, you know, additional input from like the City of Mylan and the City of Ann Arbor? Would you be able to provide that with us?
Sure. Also, on the survey, they have an opportunity, like, for a free-form comment. So there's some comments that come in through that as well, but I would seriously just encourage you to reach out to Mylan, who's the most recent one. We've been dispatching for them about seven months now, and then prior to that would have been Pittsfield in 2018. So I would think reaching out to them firsthand, that you hear it directly from them and not filtered in through us, would probably be most beneficial for you.
And then, as far as a transition goes, so, you know, should we choose, should we decide that this is the direction the City of Celine wants to take? What is sort of, you know, you said you might not be able to transition this fully until first quarter of fiscal year '24, calendar year '24. What does that transition look like? Do you sort of have an overlap? Do you just work, do you work with our current operations, or, you know, give us a little bit of a picture of what that looks like?
Yeah, I think it depends on what the City of Celine is interested in as well, and I think we would work collaboratively to figure out what was best for the citizenry of the city.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Del Orco, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My only question relates to staffing levels. Do you feel like you currently have the staff to meet the needs of a municipality this size, or would you have to fill some of those vacancies in order to meet that demand?
Well, right now, a lot of our staff are working overtime because of the vacancies. Looking at Celine's call volume, could we potentially absorb the call volume now? Probably, but that's putting additional stress on my current staff that are also currently overworked. So I feel it is better to get a couple more full-time staff currently hired and trained before we absorb another dispatch center.
Okay, so as far as how it would impact dispatch workers for the current arrangement with Celine here, would there be an opportunity for some of those folks to be absorbed by the sheriff's department, being that they're already trained and have already experience in this line of work?
Correct. There would be that opportunity. They'd have to go through probably a modified hiring process, and then certainly training, because training or dispatching in a one-to-two person center is certainly different than dispatching or call-taking in a center of five to eight staff, not to mention the geography, the different officers, you know, so there's different nuances, but there definitely would be that opportunity to hire Celine's current dispatch staff.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Del Orco. Councilmember Girba, you have five minutes.
Thank you for your presentation. It looks like a lot of things have changed since the last time that we've considered this, and a lot of things have changed for us in terms of just hiring and, like you, trying to retain and keep employees and getting individuals in the seats. How have the other communities worked or managed to resolve? Concern in our community is, we've always had 24/7 staffing in the building. How has Mylan or Pittsfield managed that, and did you work with them on setting up some kind of a situation?
We did, and I think we recognize working with these smaller agencies is that it's important for the citizens to be able to have access to their police department, be able to walk in to the front lobby and see somebody. So the last couple with Mylan and Pittsfield, they maintained a front desk person, whether it's from records, or a secretary, or someone there that could be still the face of the agency, to walk in, whether it's to set up a meeting with the chief, or, you know, whomever. They also would take on additional responsibilities as far as maybe non-emergency complaints or non-emergency call volume if someone's calling to see what time the local parade is, or if schools are closed because of the weather. Those are the types of calls that we try to off-shift and keep away from the 911 operators, so they can stay available and focused on the emergency calls.
And that's usually during daytime hours?
It's up to the individual agency, but I believe both Mylan and Pittsfield stuck with, like, Monday through Friday, traditional business hours.
And then, did they have, like, an emergency phone installed at their, at their location, so if somebody shows up, they can basically
Correct.
... you off?
Correct.
And then you already mentioned about talking about the non-emergency calls. What is your adequate benchmark measurement? When you look at your surveys and what you have there, how do those rate against where your expectations are?
So there's NINA, National Emergency Number Association. It's a national organization for 911, and they have some best practices or agency, or I'm sorry, industry standards that we look to as benchmarks as far as speed to answer a call, how long a call will hold before it's dispatched. So our statistics, we measure against that. And then as far as, like, surveys, if we receive, like, negative complaint or negative results from, like, a citizen survey or command survey, we conduct follow-up too, to make sure that it wasn't something that was handled wrong on the front end, whether it was a policy violation or a training issue, or maybe sometimes it was actually even officer involved, because sometimes the public can't differentiate the employee when they call 911 versus the individual that showed up, you know, at their house to handle their call for service. So sometimes our follow-up that we conduct is actually turned over to police services as well.
And then one comment was, it looked like a little more of a, lesser survey result in terms of officers not feeling adequate information. What would that involve, or any concern that you can address at this point, or say, what is a common commonality on that?
Oh, well, all the agencies that we dispatch for have access to our dispatch screen as well. So when we dispatch them audibly over the radio, and then we push the call for service to their laptop in the car, they have access to all that same information. So we don't necessarily read the screen word for word, because that officer can also pull up that information and read that themselves. So I don't know if maybe sometimes the scores on that question are marked down because we didn't give everything based on that screen, or if maybe they go arrival and there was more information available that the dispatcher didn't have at their disposal that they documented in the call screen.
Okay, sounds good. Is it a union shop?
They are union, correct.
Just want to clarify that. And then, well, you mentioned where I saw you had cameras on there. Do you do any kind of security monitoring for the other facilities? Should they have security cameras in the buildings or so?
Not currently, but there is discussion. For example, like, cameras in a high school, for example.
Excellent. Okay. I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Girba. I just have one question, and I'll turn it over to my three remaining colleagues. Can you talk, walk us through what the dispatch center, communications department rather, and perhaps the sheriff's office more broadly, did in 2012, 2018, and 2022 to acclimate your staff to these new communities that you began servicing? So, of course, in 2012, that would have been City of Ann Arbor, followed by Pittsfield, and then Mylan, because obviously each community is unique. So what was done to acclimate your staff to the peculiarities of each municipality?
So each one was a little bit different, and I think we learned a little bit more each time we did one of these. With Ann Arbor, though, we first consolidated, we moved into Ann Arbor Center in 2010 and worked alongside Ann Arbor Police Department dispatchers. So that really paved the way to get to know their dispatchers. We shared the call-taking responsibilities, so we were already learning the different types of calls in the City of Ann Arbor, the different geographical locations. When it came time decision that the sheriff's office was going to take on dispatch services for the City of Ann Arbor, there was obviously there was obviously a whole lot of training that still needed to take place. So we made a, you know, reference guides, different training sheets that we could help, you know, assist staff with. And with Pittsfield, was fairly similar. We looked pretty, worked pretty closely with their administration, developing a whole Pittsfield Transition Guide that was issued to staff weeks in advance that they could read over, study. Also, some of the time, we did also ride-alongs that also depended on COVID and which agency we were, you know, taking on at the time. But also to send our staff out with an officer in the patrol car to learn from them, as well as, you know, their geographical hotspots, frequented areas as well.
Very good. And to follow up on a comment that was made earlier, this is for the city manager, I think it would be valuable for council in the community to receive some sort of written feedback from, at a minimum, those three most recent municipalities who decided to consolidate with Metro Dispatch to get their feedback. So that would be Ann Arbor, Pittsfield, and Myland. And actually, I like that group too, because it's pretty eclectic and unique between the three. So that's, that's a data point that I'd be interested in looking at before making a policy decision. Thank you both for your time, appreciate it. Councilmember Dylan, excuse me, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm just going to kind of extend what the, what the mayor was just referring to. In the past, when we've brought up the idea of, of moving dispatch out of city hall, out of the city in general, residents were very concerned that the level of care and response was going to be much lower because we were sort of sending it outside of our community. And so how can we better assure them of a seamless process? And if you could explain also, currently, when somebody calls from a cell phone, where is that number going and how does that function?
Do you want to take on any, or you want me to?
I can talk about the cell phone portion of it, if you want to take the first part.
Sure. So the first part, as far as assuring your citizens on a smooth transition, is that the first half of your question?
Yes.
So, understanding that is certainly a personal decision for the entities to decide whether or not to stay with, you know, your small dispatch center that dispatches for your own police department versus going to a more, you know, larger, regionalized center is certainly a difficult decision to make. And I will tell you honestly, you will lose some of that personalization, because our focus at Washtenaw Metro Dispatch is emergency call intake. We want staff to be the very best that they can in emergency situations. So we try to filter out some of the non-emergency calls for them, the administrative calls, so they are available and able to focus on those emergency calls. So I can't assure you that you won't lose anything, because you will lose some of the personalization as far as, you know, having, be able to spend 20 minutes on the call, you know, with someone having maybe a barking dog, you know, from their neighbor, just for example. But we have to prioritize calls, and emergencies go in the order of prioritization. That would maybe be something I would talk to, you know, small, like Myland and Pittsfield, the most recent ones, to see if they've received, you know, citizen complaints, or if they would prefer things to be the other way. I guess I can't really speak to that, because I'm not a citizen in one of those areas, nor a police department, you know, for those smaller entities.
Thank you.
And as far as currently for cell phone calls, if you pick up your cell phone right now and call 911, your call is going to go to Metro Dispatch, even though you're standing in the city of Celine. If it's a law enforcement-related matter, that call will get transferred from Metro Dispatch to the city of Celine. Metro Dispatch is kind of uniquely positioned in Washtenaw County in that we have multiple call-takers available at any one time. So if you go down on Michigan Ave in the city of Celine and get in a car crash, there's probably going to be 10 or 15 people who are calling about that. The danger being, if you're in a one-person dispatch center, that dispatcher is expected to answer all of those phone calls on top of dispatching resources to that incident. And that's just a car crash, right? So currently, within Washtenaw County, if you dial 911 from a cell phone anywhere, it comes to us first. And then, if you're in one of the jurisdictions we don't provide police dispatch services for, we'll transfer it.
Thank you very much. I have a question, and I'm not sure whether it'd be for the city manager or for the police chief, which is currently there's millage dollars that we receive, is there a village that we're getting, and we receive it because we maintain our own dispatch?
We, we currently, yeah, we receive the 911 surcharge fee. We would lose that. It would get collected if we transferred to, that's approximately $33,000 a year-ish. I can confirm that number.
So that was my question. It would transfer, but it would not off, would it offset our costs of providing that service, or do we just lose those dollars and it goes to another entity?
I'm sure it's considered, but from our equation, when we ran the numbers during the cost-benefit analysis the treasurer coal put together, we just showed it as a loss and then an estimated fixed cost for services.
In your weekly communicate between you and the chief and the budget analyst, can you confirm that dollar amount?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Please continue, Ms. Dylan.
And the last question I have is, are you confident, one of the issues that we're having right now with dispatch is the staffing of it. And what it's doing is, when there's a dispatcher not there, it's pulling somebody off of their position to cover a position, which means that somebody else covers another position at times. What I want to do is, I want to know, are you confident that you're going to be able to fill seven vacancies? Does seem like a lot of staff.
Yeah, it is. And we have the same struggles that, you know, every other law enforcement dispatch center is experiencing across the nation. We currently have one in training. We have another one at final job offer. We have two more in the background phase, and then several more earlier on in the hiring process. But I'm sure, as the chief can attest as well, someone looks really good up until the end, and then you find something that is not worth, you know, taking a risk on. So.
Well, I appreciate your information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dylan. Councilmember Steele, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Where's your emergency backup center?
2201 Hogback, at the main sheriff's station.
So you go back to the old, okay.
Correct.
All right.
It's currently undergoing renovation, as we speak.
Okay. That's equipped to the same kind of consoles you have now over there in Zbro?
It will be, correct.
I'm not at all familiar with the new operation on Zbro. Of course, I was familiar with Ann Arbor and with your old operation. If we would want to come and view your dispatch center, how would we set that up? Through you, or?
The city manager.
Yes. So after, we wanted to give this presentation first, but after this, we'll coordinate at least two, if not three, times that work for Metro Dispatch, and councilmembers can sign up from there. Also, I looked at our current budget, the E-911 phone surcharge budget this year is $36,800.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have.
And actually, we'd like to do multiple trips to avoid having a working majority or quorum present at any one meeting. And also to provide you all ample opportunity to ask questions and engage with the staff. That's all you had, Mr. Steele?
That's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Kamara, do you have five minutes?
Yes. So how long does it take to train a dispatcher? I, I don't need the nitty-gritty, but, I mean, you kind of gave a little bit of, you know, the beginning.
Sure. At the sheriff's office, we have three different positions: call-taking, lean dispatch, and then east and west dispatch. So in total, starting with the dispatch academy, where they're learning all sorts of classroom information off the dispatch floor, but in total, on average, is nine to 10 months.
Wow. Sorry, it's going to take, take me a minute to draw that. Yeah, that is. So with, with your staff shortage right now, and all the overtime for the other staff, who pays for that? Is that equally distributed to the agencies, or is every community a fixed per year?
The contract number is the contract number. The agencies don't pay for overtime based on our vacancy rates or anything like that. The sheriff's office absorbs the overtime.
Okay. And how does that get paid for?
Through sheriff's office general budget funds.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any additional questions before we dismiss our guest? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Just real quick, we've talked about cell phones, and we know that. Landlines versus fiber lines, all of that, is, anything that's non-cell still go to the, I'm just curious at what, because a number of these things, we keep saying it's based on location, but it's getting to a point where none of the locations really are what trigger your calls. It's just you get them all. So is that true of landlines and?
Landlines will still go to the local PSAP. So if somebody in the city of Celine has a landline phone that is set up correctly, because you can get into some tricky situations with VoIP phones, that should go to the city of Celine directly.
But our complete switch-over would put everything to you. There would be no consideration about any of those type of connections.
Correct.
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Dylan, did you have one last question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. No additional questions? We thank you for your time, appreciate your service. Dispatching for emergency calls is, is a tough job, and it's an important job. So we look forward to continuing the conversation. Obviously, we've been blessed with excellent dispatchers here. It's an important decision that, that we need to make, but some additional analysis and discussion will, will commence. And we look forward to these tours probably in the next month, month and a half.
Absolutely.
Thanks again.
Thank you for your time.
Chief Radzak, anything else you'd like to add for the record this evening?
No.
Okay, easy enough. All right. Thank you again. We are going to transition to the consent agenda at this time. The consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed.
Mayor, I'd like to remove 2323, the Celine Youth Council.
Okay.
And I would like to remove 2322 resolution on dam.
Okay. Let me just figure out where these are going to go. So they will now be the second-to-last and the last item under new business. So, Mr. Gierbaugh, can I start with you? Would you move then to amend, approve the consent agenda as amended, striking those two items?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dylan, you'll second?
Yes.
Very good. All those in favor of removing the consent agenda, noting the two omissions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing, item 23-14, Celine Recreation Master Plan 2023 to 2027. First motion will be a motion, open the public hearing, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue if they so desired. And we would open that at 7:40.
Move to open.
Second.
Moved by Steele to open, seconded by Gierbaugh. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? You will be, you will have three minutes.
Move to close.
Moved by Steele to close at 7:40. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gierbaugh. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion on the floor to either approve or not to approve Resolution Number 2314, the 2023 through 2027 Celine Recreation Master Plan, or some other appropriately worded motion.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved simply by Gierbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
By Dylan. Director Scruggs, do you care to make a comment?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to invite Chris Nordstrom from Carlisle-Wartman Associates. He was our, our master planner that we worked with. And I guess to answer any questions you might have, we, we had four months of public input at our park commission meetings. We would address three parks each month and invite the public to attend those. It was fairly light. We had, I think our most popular one was the second meeting in July, and we had about eight or nine people from the public come to that. And we kind of did a little brainstorming session and provided the information to Chris. We also had an online survey for all of July and August, that we, we actually got more, almost 200 applicant-
231.
231 responses from the community to give that input. And then, at our last meeting at Park Commission, we, the Park Commission made a resolution to adopt the, the master plan and to send it on for official resolution for city council.
Very good. Director Scruggs, could you take just two minutes, primarily for the public's benefit, to explain what a Parks and Rec master plan is, what it contains, and why it's important?
I'll, I'll let Chris answer.
Chris, that'd be great. And then my second question, I think, is definitely best addressed by you, which is, if you could, subsequent to answering my first question, if you could maybe take just a couple of minutes to talk about the substance of what is in the proposed document?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the recreation plan is an aspirational document, and it provides a guideline for the Parks Department over the next five years. It's something that's required by the DNR to be on, on staff, or on file with them in order for you to be available for grant funding, beginning on April 1st of this year. The deadline for submission is February 1st. So tonight, it represents the second of the two required forms of public input. The first was a, the online survey that Carlisle already discussed, along with the additional input that we received, including some emails from residents, and then those, those council, the commission meetings. And with this, tonight, hopefully, you will agree to adopt the plan. We can submit it to the DNR on the 1st. And then that will make you eligible for grant funding through the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and the Recreation Passport Fund. Each one of those grant programs can offer up to $300,000 for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund in land and water conservation. Actually, it's an unlimited amount for acquisition purposes on the land and water side. And then the Recreation Passport can be up to $150,000 grant opportunity. And each of those requires a match of a certain level. For Recreation Passport and Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, it's a 25% match minimum. For land and water conservation is 50% match. So that's kind of the background of why you do this. What we found residents asking for wasn't anything unusual. There was a lot of requests for continued maintenance and upgraded maintenance on some of the equipment. Some of the equipment's a little bit older, especially in a couple of the smaller parks. There was significant interest in trail development, including the possibility of a water trail from Celine down to Myland. There was a lot of discussion about preserving natural features. And so Salt Springs Park is a great example of having a park facility that actually preserves those natural features. And then there was some discussion about programming. Oops, not sure if that's me.
No, we just, no, we got, usually it's cell phones close to the mics.
I apologize. So the last item was really mostly about programming, increasing programming opportunities, and increasing the hours that are available. So residents who might be working during the day and can't take advantage of some of the, of the programs that are offered, have that opportunity to take things later on in the evening. The fifth element that came up was the idea of funding. We asked residents if they would support a dedicated millage to fund recreation programming. And it was 86% were in favor of some level of, of a millage. Now, to be fair, this is a group of people who are very interested in parks. So that might be, you might get a different result if you put that out on, on a ballot with the general population. But that's still a very high number, and I think it was something that was worth consideration later on down the line.
Very good. Appreciate that analysis. Are there questions for either our Parks and Rec director or our guest from Carlisle-Wartman? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. I'll be honest, this is a really heavy lift, to read 140 pages over a weekend. So it's, you know, I, I don't know that I can say that I've read it cover to cover. I want to say that I, I would wish that we had more time. I had no idea that there was a February 1st deadline, and we're right up against it. Because I do feel as though, for me, I would like to have more of a conversation of how this plan integrates with the upcoming city's master plan, things about millages, things about, just a lot of these things that you've talked about, which is, are do these, are they going to align with the city's current strategic plans? And so that's the piece that I'm a little bit hesitant about. Once this document is, is adopted, can it be revised?
Yes, it can. You can do an amendment process. It would just require an additional public hearing later on, prior to its formal adoption, and then that's submitted to the DNR again. So if something comes up, whether it be a new opportunity, or some other, some other feature of the, of the city changes, and you need to make an adjustment to the plan, you can definitely do so. Just to speak to the amount of time that was available, and this is, it, it has been online for the past 30 days. It was publicly noticed back in early December. It's, so it's been around and available for, for residents to read. I can't speak to whether, not that got to you, and it's unfortunate that it didn't before this past weekend.
Yeah, I, I will say that it did not work its way to me. I, I'm concerned that residents haven't really had that opportunity. Also, we have not really discussed it beyond just very generic terms. So, like I said, I do feel a little bit pressured that we're right up against that February 1 deadline.
Additional questions for, actually, I was going to call Councilmember Rice first. She had her hand up, and I'll jump back to you, Mr. Gierbaugh.
One of my questions was just answered, that it has been online for at least the last 30 days. We had access to it. Was there, was there, and I apologize, I'm a new city council member, so I'm over here for, this is only my second meeting. Was a copy of this provided to council earlier, in any sort of update?
In our monthly reports, the, the information is- In our monthly reports, the information is in there. It's on our website. We have actually a physical draft out in the lobby. It's at the Rec Center. We had invites to all of our previous input sessions with the public and whatnot. So I feel like we've spent a lot of time, I mean, this has been a process that we've been going through for the past six months, really, or actually a little bit longer than that. So we're at that point where this is an every-five-year document. This is an aspirational document. This is something, if we don't have this in our plan, like projects or whatnot, we're not eligible to apply for the grants through the DNR. We can apply to other grant opportunities, like through SNCOG or CARES or whatnot, but any type of state funding, we have to have this document on file. If, you know, if something comes up and we don't have it in our document, like Chris said, we have the opportunity to amend the document. It's a process that we go through. It's fairly, you know, it's pretty easy to do that, to amend it at some point. But we gathered a lot of input from our public. I read through it several times. Staff has had, I got comments from our other colleagues, our DPW Director and whatnot. And, you know, I feel very comfortable that this is a very good, workable document right now. And again, if we do need to make any type of amendments to it, that's a process we can go through.
And for the record, this type of document does not make any commitment to action. It is a hopes and dreams document, if you will.
Correct.
To a certain extent, with information provided by, you know, department heads and the public and whatnot.
Right. It's kind of like our guide, you know, that we prioritize things as far as like what, you know, maintenance items are top priority in maintaining what we have. But it's also, as opportunities become available for grants or whatnot, you know, our lowest priority may become a higher priority because the money is available at some point. And the opportunities are right there. So we just have to have it included.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Gierbach?
A couple of things. I have some questions, but procedural too. So Ms. Scruggs, you mentioned that this was available on our website. Right now, when I go to click on anything associated with master plan, it brings up our 2016 plan.
There's a, I'm not sure where you're looking, but
I'm on the Parks Commission's site.
It shows our draft master plan.
It's on the front page of the website.
The city's website?
The city's website.
Right now, I'm on there, and it says Parks and Recreation. The city, and I click on Master Plan PDF, it brings up the 2016 report.
You might need to clear your browsing history.
This has relaunched three times.
Okay.
So I'm not sure. One of my concerns was, of course, there was no link to this in part of our agenda, so the public did not have the opportunity to see this document from the perspective of our agenda. I also was a bit concerned because even I wasn't aware of a meeting for our, I wasn't aware of a meeting for the Canterbury Park until after the fact. And I don't know where this was mentioned in the FYI letter that we held these individual. There's a lot of concerns that I have with how much public input got into this, but at this point, understanding that there was some meeting, it was just, I'm not sure how well this was advertised and how it occurred. It's a similar consideration that I've had with our own master plan, because we only had one really successful meeting where we had more than 10 people, I would say. Just identifying that our public participation in these plans has been minimal at most.
We actually had a lot of participations, more virtual.
Well, and that's the thing, that survey, we've been depending
200-plus responses is pretty outstanding compared to normal.
Yeah, I would say that, so we worked on the previous recreation plan that you're referencing a moment ago. And at that time, we did that in conjunction with the comprehensive master planning efforts. So we had a little bit more participation then, but I believe at that time, the survey results were something like 400 or 500 results came in. So to get 230 responses this time through, plus for in-person meetings and the public hearing tonight, is actually a pretty strong result. So I understand your concerns. It would be wonderful if we had a couple thousand responses. But it's always a challenge to get people to participate in these types of meetings, short of doing something like a statistically significant survey where you hire somebody and spend about, it costs about $20,000 roughly to send it out to each individual household, and then do individual in-person interviews to find out what's going on. Just, I'm just throwing that out.
Right. And for me, it's understanding, we're having a similar issue, because we don't have an input from those that do not necessarily have a virtual presence online.
Understood.
Also trying to understand exactly who submitted those requests, whether they were citizens of the city or citizens of the surrounding population.
So that was something that we did specifically request. We asked in the survey if you were a Celine resident or from one of the surrounding communities.
Do you have an idea what the percentage was?
I can tell you. Yeah, it's a...
And while he's looking for that, I do want to confirm, every member of staff up here has been able to open the draft plan from the front page of the website under City News and Announcements.
Okay, I'm on the Parks Commission's website, so then it must be
It's under, yeah, it's under City News and Announcements, so it's on our landing page, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you. Again, that's one of the things when we do these layouts on our website, there's some confusion.
Sure. So 79% of the participants were Celine residents. And one of the things that we did, because there is, you know, occasionally a concern about individuals going through and kind of doing ballot stuffing with an online survey, is we did take a look at all the IP addresses that responded, and confirmed that there were no more than one or two instances where you had more than one response from the same address or IP address. And that could be attributed to two members of a family going through and putting in responses.
And for my own interests, it would be interesting to know how many hits we actually had on the master site, on the master plan on the site, city managerial tool. Did this plan include, and again, I haven't had the chance to review the whole thing too, because we just saw it as of Friday, include the regional park that potentially is happening in Celine Township?
The regional park?
Grossman property, which was just announced that the funding for that
I believe that was included.
I think so.
Because we do, there is a regional section.
Yeah. We did, yeah, we did look at all the different DNR sites. And I apologize, I've been working on a few of these, so I'm trying to remember exactly which the Grossman Road property would be.
Off of Macon Road, Macon.
Accepted it as a preserve.
It's connected, would be connected with the Leslie Needham Preserve, Michigan Fisheries, Salt Spring Park.
That is in there.
Yeah.
And my other question actually would be for, actually, Mr. Harrington. Do you believe this report interacts well enough with our new master plan that's coming up? Or is there some lacking or other actual suggestions that you would have for this plan?
So one of the things I was curious about, that I asked Director Scruggs about, was usage of our parks, if we have any formal data on it. But there's not really a good standard, and maybe our consulting can speak to that, on how you track usage of a park. Unless you put somebody out there all day, which, to your point, is a very time-consuming and very expensive thing to do, especially if you give up a staff member, and you're trying to track it over a period of time. It's not as easy as a parking survey, so to speak. As for, does it contribute well? I think it does. I think part of the strategy in coming up with these plans, leaving yourself open to a diversity of projects that can achieve funding through the DNR, that can achieve funding through grants, that is aspirational. And I think all the items that we've talked about so far in our town halls, and the other engagement efforts we've done with the larger master plan as it relates to the parks, I think does fit nicely with this aspirational plan.
And I would add, in December of '22, draft plan was disseminated to relevant department heads for input. So that direct input was provided as part of the process. I know I had some comments that I added at that time as well.
Yeah, and also Ben took it to the high school, and you did an input session with the high school kids for the master plan.
Right, for the larger, but a lot of the larger concerns of the high school kids centered around, well, what are we doing with our parks? And they also had an opportunity, and I shared that same feedback, specifically the park-related feedback with Director Scruggs in probably September or October.
Right. That was included. Numerous emails directly to me, phone calls, things like that. I always passed it on to Chris, saying, hey, make sure this is included as part of that input process.
And the reason why I'm asking a lot of these questions has been this pushback that we had, including the water rate increase and these other ones. Did we do our due diligence to make sure that we have sufficient input from the correct individuals, not necessarily individuals that are outside our community, although they do use our parks, which would help justify some of the changes that may be recommended, even the millage that you're talking about? Because currently, we do have a community rec millage, well, a CARES millage that unfortunately has been re-prioritized and not necessarily supporting what it was originally intended to. So this understanding of what the public is willing to do and what they want, it's very clear that we need to have that information, and I want to make sure they've had the opportunity to review this document.
No, absolutely. I understand that completely. And one of the things that we did do with the survey, and one of the nice things about the platform that we use now, is it gives us the opportunity to break out responses by, from residents versus non-residents. So even as you look at the millage, for example, or satisfaction rates for any one of the individual parks, or visitation rates, you can start to narrow down exactly where these respondents came from, and it helps to give a little bit clearer picture of what people are asking for. So the results that I gave you a little, a few moments ago, that was the general overall picture, but you can definitely burrow into that data. And we provided the pure raw data. So if Carla wants to go through and really narrow down by, you know, who lives in this neighborhood, and what do they think of their neighborhood park, they can do that as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. CO, you had a quick question before we vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt?
Just to comment, Your Honor. During the times I was president, at the Parks and Recreation Committee meetings, we did address individual parks on individual nights. And I was impressed with the number of folks that showed up on their own to come and address their neighborhood park, and the kinds of things that they saw, that they thought they needed, or things that could be improved in those parks. So to try and assuage some of my colleagues' concerns, I don't know, Carla, how you got the word out, but there was, I was impressed with the number of folks that came to the meetings, the individual parks, and spoke to their particular parks' needs. So apparently, the word got out there somehow.
Very good. Any additional questions, Mr. Kamarie Sulak?
Yes, just real quick. Aside from the splash pad desire, were there any other significant changes from the last plan?
I would have to say the biggest change from the last five years to this five years is the want and need for more connecting, connecting communities. Definitely connecting to the Border to Border Trail, connecting to Pittsfield, to York Township, just, you know, it's that, you know, the pathway uses and connecting our parks and things like that. So accessibility is the biggest change.
That makes perfect sense.
And I would echo that as well. When the last recreation plan came out, the Iron Bell Trail had just been introduced, and nobody had heard of it. And by this time around, people are starting to realize that, hey, here's this opportunity to go on thousands of miles of trails, and how do we get to that? And, you know, knowing that some of your surrounding communities actually have a direct connection to the Border to Border, and therefore, the Iron Bell Trail gets people really excited and want to connect to that. So the idea of having more intergovernmental cooperation between you and other communities, I think that's something that was a little bit stronger this time around.
Definitely.
Okay. And then my second question. So in looking at the 16 action items, you can definitely see that there's a desire for maintenance and improvement. Is that, are those normal things that you, that you get from the community, comments that, you know, we would like some new playground equipment, or something, is old and to fix some, you know, fix, you know, fix whatever, widen the trails, say, at Wildwood? Or in looking at this, it kind of seems like maybe we're not, are we taking good care of our parks?
Yeah, that's a common theme in every master plan, or when we're getting public input, is, hey, we want bigger and better. We want, you know, this, you know, this is getting old. We'd like to have it replaced. The maintenance of the parks is very well done. Our park foreman, Chris Benedict, is very much on top of it, as was his predecessor, Dan Bennett, making sure that everything is safe and solid and in good condition. There are standards for playground equipment, so we obviously have to meet all of those standards. So, but it is a common theme always, like, hey, you know, this is an old, you know, this should be replaced, or, you know, let's just maintain what we have.
Right.
So that's a common theme, definitely.
In my experience, most of the parks in my '22, '23 years here have been maintained very well. So I appreciate that, and I know our parks are one of our competitive advantages. We have so, we have so many of them. And I'm glad they're being taken care of so well. Thank you.
If it helps, I've done roughly 40 plans over the past five years, and I'd say, without fail, the top two requests in each community is trails and maintenance. So I don't think that there was anything unusual. That's why, when I started out, decided to say there's anything unusual in this plan. I think your residents are telling you exactly what you should be hearing, that, hey, you know, we like our parks, but there's room for improvement. And certainly, there is. But I would say that, based on what I've seen compared to other communities, your parks are right up there with anybody else that I've seen.
That's good to know. That really helps my confidence level even greater.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions? One last question before we vote. Go ahead.
Thank you. So what were you able to accomplish from the last master plan? Where do you feel, I mean, is this just a continuation of the same plan? Have we been able to accomplish things? Have things fallen off? What can you talk to about that?
Certainly. So at the Park Commission meetings, we reviewed the current project list. There is quite a few things that we've accomplished during that last five years. We would take those projects off. So, you know, put a play structure at Brecken Park, done. Finish the trail at Brecken Park, so there's a continuous loop. That's done. So we would remove things that were accomplished. And then what we're doing with the public input and with our Park Commission is brainstorming. What else is out there? What have you seen in other places that you think would go well in, you know, in Celine and in specific parks? So again, the whole process of this input is brainstorming. And what do we, you know, what do we visualize our community looking like, as far as our parks, in the next five years, or, and actually, beyond the five years? This isn't like, hey, we have to accomplish all of these things in five years. It will never happen. I mean, there's millions and millions of dollars worth of improvements, or ideas, that sometimes they're a pie in the sky type of aspiration. But if you don't have it in your master plan, or as a vision, you would never, if the funding became available, you'd never have access to that unless you obviously amend your master plan. So quite a lot got taken care of in the prior master plan. That's our guide for budgeting. That's our guide for, you know, when we're looking at different priorities and things like that, whether it's staff or our Park Commission.
Thank you.
Here we have a motion on the floor moved by Gierbach, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve Resolution Number 2023-14, '23 through '27 Celine Recreation Master Plan?
Move to approve.
Moved by CO to approve. Is there a second? Was that seconded by Kamarie Sulak?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll get you on the next one, Councilmember Rice. To our guest and Director Scruggs, thank you. Appreciate your time and analysis. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Please?
I appreciate the inclusion of the Depot Museum and the Farm Museum, because I would believe that they should become a part of our park system, not just be operating on their own, because I believe that would be a benefit for not only maintaining them, but providing even a more recreational aspect. And then lastly, just as I've noticed, looking at one of the pictures, restoration of Riston Park, after that work was done, the library wasn't put back, nor was the stone in the monument and the tree that was taken out.
Thank you.
The library is back. The rock is on property, but it's not put back in its place yet.
Is there plans to do any additional tree planting this spring?
I wouldn't have to. Yes, there is.
Okay, very good. Excellent. I was actually thinking about the tree issue as well. Because I think we lost a tree that was planted by the schoolchildren for Arbor Day maybe two, three years ago. Yeah, which happens. It's a shame nevertheless. Any additional discussion? Ms. Dillon?
Just quickly, sort of the elephant in the room is that, at this point, we don't know the future of the Rec Center and where that's going to end up. So I want to make sure that we do keep kind of close control over this document and revisit it. I think it's going to be a really important thing going forward.
I think it's going to be a really important thing going forward. And I do understand the idea that it is pie in the sky, but I don't want to have unrealistic expectations for people. So I want to make sure that what's in there is actually things that the city feels are moving it in the direction that we want to go. So I guess going forward, I want to make sure that we're sort of funneling these down into what really is our priorities. I mean, because we, we talk about things, and then they don't always end up happening, and so then there's this expectation of, well, you said you were going to do it, and you didn't, or we told you we wanted it, and you didn't do it. So I think if we can just have an understanding with the community of what's realistic, I think that would be very important.
If I may add to that, I would strongly encourage anyone with the, in the community, and I know staff is taking this focus this year especially, our capital improvement plan is really intended to be that more realistic document of what's attainable within the immediate future. As has been discussed here, this master planning document really supports our efforts to go after grant dollars, and as we all know, sometimes projects are not a reality if they can't get the funding, especially parks projects where it's very difficult to find general fund dollars. So I, I think we're, we're stuck a little bit between trying to meet a state obligation and setting realistic expectations, and the document that we control most closely in terms of the reasonableness of execution is the capital improvement plan.
Very good. There's no additional discussion. We do have a motion on the floor, moved by Seau, seconded by Kamara Sulaq, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As having, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, appreciate your time. We move on to new business, item 23-15, Fee Book Resolution, Meter Surcharge. This will be a motion to acknowledge, receive the memo from City Manager O'Toole, and to adopt or not to adopt Resolution Number 23-15.
Moved to acknowledge and adopt.
Moved by Seau to acknowledge and adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. City Manager O'Toole, do you care to make a brief obligatory comment for the record?
Certainly, we're nearing conclusion of the meter changeout program. We had a lot of success with implementing new meter systems. Residents should be able to start downloading the applications and using that online portal, gaining all the benefits really of the new system, like leak detection services, and actually monitoring your usage in real time. We do have some holdouts, we're continuing to schedule, because the deadline is January 31st of this year, but we anticipate, there are a few people who've told us they're not interested in making the change, and we will have to manually read those meters moving forward. And to do that, we're assessing a surcharge that's directly related to the cost of reading those meters and administratively putting in those, those usages.
Good. Questions for the city manager? Let me start with Mr. Del Orco, and then I'll transition to Councilmember Kamara Sulaq.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager O'Toole, for, for the, as you described, holdouts, has, has it been sufficiently explained to them that it's going to cost them an extra $75 a quarter if they don't comply?
Well, we've, we've indicated that there will be an additional fee. We do have another letter going out, Treasurer Cole's doing one last push, and that $75 will be directly highlighted. But yes, previous communications have indicated failure to comply would result, it's technically an ordinance violation as well.
Right. So there's, we're not in any area of gray, legally speaking, to assess the homeowner that fee if they don't switch their meter.
This, this, this amount and this issue have been fully vetted by legal.
Thank you. All right. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Kamara Sulaq?
Yes, thank you. So this $75 fee would be assessed when the meter needs to be read?
Yes, quarterly, yep.
At the end of March?
So for the billing, not, not for this quarter that they're currently sitting in, starting February 1. So for the billing period that starts February 1.
Okay. I don't look past how, how, how much it is every, every quarter, so, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. So if you just do some quick math, and you take that, you know, 238 of people remaining, times a 75, you're talking about $18,000 a quarter. Is that going to be utilized to absorb the staff time incurred? Is that what we're at, is that what we're basing that on?
Yes, that's directly related to the staff time of both DPW and the Finance Department.
Okay. Because the other piece to this that we were not talking about is that I thought a big part of the meter changeout aspect was to capture accurate water usage. And so those people are still going to have a benefit theoretically of having a lower water usage?
We did run that question by legal, and, and they did not feel that there were sufficient grounds or, or case law to support us basing a charge that was related to anticipated water loss, but you are correct. There is some anticipated water loss calculation, especially in a few of these homes, extremely old meters.
And why is it that we cannot mandate change?
Well, we could, if council would like to take action, to kind of accelerate the, you know, the, the push that we're making here. I guess it's a reasonable first step to start with a surcharge fee, very, very easy, well-established means of, you know, charging for noncompliance. We could look at our ordinances and strengthen our ordinances and start considering whether civil infractions wanted to be implemented. There's a pretty extensive process involved in that, legally speaking, but, you know, at this point, maybe let's see how the, the fees impact people, and if that pushes more people to comply.
It will.
Well, I mean, I'm concerned right now because, you know, we've got, within the city, I mean, the, another idea with this was that we didn't have, we would not have to use staff labor to be doing this. Now, we're still going to have to use staff labor, and it's going to be even more time-consuming because you're going to have one on this street, one in that neighborhood, two over here. It's going to be very time-consuming, it's not like they're going to be able to zip up and down, you know, two streets and be done.
I mean, it'll definitely be less time-consuming than the alternative, which is what we previously had, a hodgepodge of different systems. But, but yes, I mean, there's a reason that this $75 fee exists. It is, it has a real impact on staff and time, and we need to recover that, that time.
Okay. The other piece is that, does this changeover also apply to our island properties?
Yes, anyone who doesn't have a meter, that is a current user.
Okay, so our island properties have?
They are also required to get the new meter system, yes.
Okay. Because I do want to address that in another conversation about those properties, and how we're going to be handling them. Thank you.
Any additional questions? No? Any comments on the motion? Mr. Girba?
I believe you, you only have 236 now?
Yeah, 230, yeah.
Yeah, I kind of today registered too. I had a problem with.
Oh, you're one of our problem trials, okay.
I acknowledged previously, I was also on holdouts.
Okay.
You got at least two on council.
All right, well, apparently we're taking the list down right now, so.
This is only the commercial building, the other ones were done.
Oh, okay.
110-year-old house, that's important.
Now we know who the troublemakers in town are.
Yeah.
I acknowledged that before the issue came, came about, so just for full disclosure. But I look forward to completing the changeout, and I, I support the, the motion, and I think the surcharge is a, is a reasonable proposal, considering the difficulty that exists to manually read. A relatively few outliers within the, go ahead, Mr. Girba, real quick.
I would just request that we have a report back to council on, by June, for June, in June.
Yeah, we'll have, I'm sure Treasurer Cole will update in her monthly report at the end of January, the total number that have officially complied, and then, again, after next quarter, how that changes with the next billing cycle.
Because it would be interesting, I know there's push not to be able to discontinue waters, water use, I know there's an issue about disconnecting water, but it does start to raise a question of providing a service for something that simply just needs to be a replacement on the year, so. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, moved by Seau, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to adopt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As having, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 23-16, Ordinance Number 847, An Amendment to Article 4 of the Zoning Ordinance to Eliminate Building Story Regulation. This will be a motion to acknowledge, receive the memo from Community Development Director Harrington, and to adopt or not to adopt New Ordinance Number 847, Amending Article 4, Section 4.05.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Moved by Rice to, to acknowledge and to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Girba. Let me begin with a brief presentation from Community Development Director Harrington, and then, since this is a zoning ordinance, it was reviewed and discussed at our most recent Planning Commission meeting, so I'll allow Mr. Girba, the Planning Commission liaison, to share a few words before we open up for questions or discussion. Mr. Harrington, the floor is yours.
Absolutely, and to address some of the public comments first, so the fire department did in fact review this.
Mr. Harrington, would you pull the microphone?
Yeah, absolutely, sorry. My computer blocking it. So the fire department did in fact review this. We actually regulate height in addition to stories, so we have a firm height limit of 35 feet, in addition to having a two-stories limit. Now, the regulations surrounding stories are purely aesthetic, actually. We, we have primary examples of buildings that are three stories that are in the city, but our definition of story is that any, it's any room between a floor and a ceiling that's used for the principal use. So in the case of a house, an unfinished basement is used for storage, not for a living space. So when a basement is finished, it would then technically become a story, which is not something that the city had historically enforced. So anyone who had a two-story home with an unfinished basement, who then finished their basement, would have technically needed a variance to comply with our code. So this went through code review, this went through a planning commission, so there's that practical concern. We have examples of aesthetic three-story homes that already exist as such, so I think it's the Wexford Commons that are right off of Bemis, are aesthetically three-story buildings, they're two stories stacked above a garage, but since the garage's primary use is storage, therefore, it's not considered a story for that specific property. We have other examples of buildings downtown, which have a different story regulation. The hotel got a variance for the stories. Farisha is technically more than a two-story building, but it dates back before our zoning code, so really, it comes down to, is this aesthetics barrier, is this aesthetics requirement a barrier for development? And I think wholeheartedly, the answer is yes, people are looking at buildings slightly higher, rather than trying to accommodate lower planes. So fundamentally, that, that's why we brought this forward to you, due to the city's technical noncompliance or non-follow-through with the ordinance as it is written. It's a prohibition to development, and yeah, that's pretty much it, and it's primarily an aesthetics concern. Our fire department is able to meet the height requirement that we have set out as a city, which is 35 feet.
Very good. My apologies, too. After I defer to Mr. Girba, Mr. Del Orco, if you have any comments from Code Review, I welcome that. Mr. Girba, I believe this particular ordinance was approved by Planning Commission on a unanimous vote with two absences. Anything you'd like to add?
Correct. It was the issue that the height is the other controlling part of this. We have three different height requirements based upon the zoning of where those locations are. The one clarification, could you explain how height is measured?
Yes, so with the tilted roof, it's a little bit more difficult, it's to like the median point, so if you have a sloped roof, it's from the midpoint of the triangle going, I don't know if that makes sense.
The eaves troughs.
The eaves troughs, yes, let's go with that. The formal turn, I think it's actually within our definition of how it's measured. But other than that, if it's a flat roof, it's measured from where it intersects the ground to the top of the building. So any negative height, so a building built in, you could have three stories underground, or in the case of the college I went to, you could have seven stories underground and be like a pseudo-nuclear bunker, but that, that probably raises more building concerns than anything else.
So now, at this point, if we were to build a, I'm trying to give an example, we don't include the basement as a third story, correct, unless it's finished?
Yes, so we would technically call it a story because our ordinance still provides the definition for a story at that point, but we, we're not capping them, we're not punishing somebody or trying them to, to meet our story standard.
So if I'm building a new building, and I present it, if I can build three stories within a 35-foot height, that does not include the basement, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Del Orco, any comments from Code Review?
This was discussed at Code Review, and I want to emphasize that I think when, at the time we were looking at this, it was discussed through the lens of how it might apply to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that's currently being discussed. And I, I wanted to make it clear, the, my own understanding, as well as the public, that the intent of the ordinance is to regulate height, not really regulate stories, and moving the restore, story component of this ordinance does not affect our ability to enforce the 35-foot height requirement.
That is true, and in addition, if we had a site plan concern, so if someone brought a proposal before the city council, or before anybody, that was 34, 35 feet next to a very low-dense residential neighborhood, you could absolutely make the critique that, you know, this doesn't really fit the general site aesthetic. That, that's a fair critique, that's, that's allowable per our own standards, so, and that's something we could effectively compel somebody to change as a result of our site plan review process, so, but yes, it, yes.
And it was also brought up about the ladder trucks in the fire department on Code Review when this came up at the time, and that because the heights won't be affected, our ability for the fire department to combat any type of situation would not be impaired.
That is correct, I talked to the fire chief about that, and he's fully confident in their abilities to do it. Any new builds, especially buildings over 30 feet, have additional requirements for pressure, for aerial firefighting capabilities, I think it's called a standpipe that goes to the roof, that, that acts as a second hydrant, so the building operates as itself a hydrant. So there are a whole variety of firefighting techniques that exist today, that, you know, didn't even exist 30 or 40 years ago for developments of the size we're talking about. So the fire department has no concerns when I, when I approach them with a specific issue.
So the only additional question that I have, then, comes actually to me from citizen input, in that if we discuss defining stories more nebulous, is what's going to end up happening here, is it possible that finished basements could then be calculated into the square foot of the home, and then be used for tax implications in the assessor's office?
So if you finished your basement, it's already being calculated into the, it's already, it's a specific line item actually in our building permits, that a basement renovation is separate than a regular basement, because it has taxable purposes, because it, it doesn't fact raise the value of your home to finish a room.
So yes, just so I'm clear, when someone pulls a permit to finish the basement, and then the final inspection happens, the assessor's office reassesses the property based on the square foot with the finished basement. However, that does not factor into a real estate listing when you go to sell your home. Is that, is that true?
Right, so I think our assessor would be better to talk about the differences between how they assess property versus how a real estate lists property, because I understand that those two things aren't meshed, but yes, to your first point, that is correct. Anytime someone pulls a building permit, our systems are all intentionally tied together, so finance is able to see that, if they want to, that this person has pulled a permit, the assessor has information on the property, and the, and the county does as well, to be honest with you, so that, that's kind of how all that information ties together in that way.
Okay.
This in no way is us trying to retroactively charge people dollars, you know, we don't have the capacity or the time even, but that's more or less beside the point, because if they have finished their basement and they had pulled the permit, it would have already been reflected on their taxes.
All right, thanks.
Questions for our rep from Code Review Planning, or Mr. Harrington? Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. Just for clarification, so if you have a garage under your, your stories, is that counting, or that's totally, is that considered unfinished?
Yeah, so a garage would be considered, the primary purpose is to store your car, so the primary use of that space is storage. So for, in the, in the instance of like Wexford Commons, that primary fir, floor, that, excuse me, the first floor, for us, the, the story above ground, which is a garage, would be considered storage use, therefore, not a story, and then we're only counting the principal use, which is living space, on the two stories above it.
Okay. So just for clarification, then, if we are changing this, does this mean that garages can be built up to a certain height, or is it just?
They could already be built up to a certain height.
Okay.
So there's no, so there's already, so if it's a detached garage, we have accessory structure standards that regulate the height, to Mr. Del Orco's point, that's a point of consideration for the ADU, but even in a home that is finished, so we have two people with a finished basement, a secondary exit point out of the basement, you know, and they want to rent their basement as a part of an ADU process, that would effectively be allowed under this ordinance, too, and we're all above board acknowledging that, yes, that is a finished story, we're not pretending it to be otherwise. There's also actually an example of the inverse of the garage question there, too, where we have historic homes that had bonus rooms, or these attics that were not originally meant to be load-bearing, they were meant to be storage back in the day, but over time, people have converted them to load-bearing floors, they've converted them to living space, either for a nursery, or for a playroom, or for something else. Those equally were not properly reflected in our ordinance, because that is a three-story structure, and when they finished it and made it living space, that's at what point they should have been required to apply for a variance under our code. This is all to say that the story regulation in and of itself is somewhat problematic, because if our ultimate goal is to regulate height, then we should just regulate height, rather than trying to regulate some weird mixture of aesthetics surrounding height.
Okay. And then just, my last question on that is, when we're talking about height, what, what do you do with facades? what do you do with facades? So the structure ends here, but then they've got a facade. Do you count to the top of that facade, or is it just to the roof line?
So the highest point is, I have to pull up our building height code. So the building height is the vertical distance measured from the finished gray level to the highest point of the roof surface if a flat roof. So even if the facade went up to the finished roof and there was a gap there, I guess I'm trying to understand your...
So you've got a flat roof, and then, this is your roof, and then they've built up a big facade above that. It's not a story, there's nothing behind it, but that's where they're putting their signage or whatever. Does that get included in this height?
I think it would depend on the specific case, because we have other provisions restricting how far you can go above our height requirement for things like that. But then in addition, as I mentioned, that's part of the site plan review. So I understand that technically by right, you might be allowing it, but any facade that extends beyond the top of the building would be something that the city could effectively say yes or no to on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we were not providing that opportunity for people to just grow, just for the sake of growth.
Vertical signage is by no means my intent here, so.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, Mr. Gierbaum?
Just a comment. Both this and the next ordinance change were generated as a result of negotiations for property and development. So it's clear that this wasn't necessarily something that was on the agenda, but it was part of our ideas in moving forward of what things we need to create.
And if I can count that on that, Mr. Gierbaum, for this and the next ordinance, whatever the city decides to do with that specific property is more or less irrelevant to the city's missions with this specific goal. If you choose to rezone that property to ag use, or to industrial, or to anything else, it's the city's prerogative and definitely your option. You're by no means bound to sell that property to any developer. You're by no means bound to not rezone that property into whatever you'd like it to be. The reason we're bringing these ordinances before you today is because they're practical and they offer us solutions that I think reach our strategic goals. We're welcome to disagree on those things.
Right, and I thank you for that. But again, these were generated by recent discussions. This wasn't something that just simply came out of our regular ideas, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor moved by Rice, seconded by Gierbaum pertaining to ordinance number 847, Article 4. It's been properly moved to acknowledge and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Isaiah Abbott, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-17, ordinance number 848, amending Article 5 of the zoning ordinance to allow for increased density. This will be a motion to acknowledge, receive the memo from Community Development Director Harrington to adopt or not to adopt ordinance number 848, amending Article 5, Section 5.0612.
Move to acknowledge, receive.
Moved by Gierbaum simply to acknowledge, receive. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Again, Mr. Harrington, would you like to begin? And then I'll take a comment from Mr. Gierbaum as the planning commission rep. And did code review also take a look at this?
It did not come to code review.
Okay.
It went directly to planning.
That's what I thought.
So I might be a little long-winded here, but zoning and density especially are particularly nuanced, contentious, confusing issues that often have a lot of information and misinformation about the issues that we're talking about. So to start the planning commission meeting, it was recommended for approval by the planning commission at their January 11th meeting on a six-to-one vote. There seemed to be support from planning commissioners about taking this further, about reevaluating our entire density standards in R3A, potentially looking at R3. But as I explained to them, this is kind of me dipping my toe in the water to see where they're at in terms of density, where you're at in terms of density, and to make a small change that's practical going forward, but then to open a conversation to really reevaluate density across the board in our community. And Mayor Marl and Councilmember Gierbaum were both there as well, and can probably share their perspectives on the meeting. I submitted to you an eight-page memo. I hope you had the chance to read it. There are a lot of pictures in it, so it wasn't really eight pages. But I think the thing I missed in the memo before I dive into that was really the so what? Why do we care about density beyond the fact that I think that this is a best practice that we see as planners to update these standards when we find that they're behind the times? So I highlighted some of the obvious benefits to the city in the memo, such as lowering the relative cost of development, lowering the cost to the end user, the renter, or the buyer, and increasing property value, all which have implications for the city, but in part of any economic development strategy. As part of our master planning process where we consider housing, to work better with our businesses, to achieve our growth goals as a community, density is going to be part of that conversation. And it's always going to be uncomfortable and not a topic we want to address, because people don't have full information, and they don't have complete information, and there's the concept of NIMBYism not in my backyard. But density is really, as our city of our size and our financial means, density controls and our control over the supply of housing is really our only tool, and it's our best tool, to regulate and tackle housing issues. We hear from our employers regularly that density, or the lack of housing and the lack of attainable housing in our city is a problem. Treasurer Cole and I had the opportunity to meet with the folks at FERCIA on Tuesday of last week, who told us just as much. In fact, the deputy plant manager, the second in line to run the whole plant, also feels that he can't really afford a house or find attainable housing in Celine for him and his family. And it's true for our own city staff. Most of the people that work for this organization can't find housing that either fits their needs or is attainable for them. And with actual data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, from the American Census Bureau, we know that the city's workforce, the people who work in our industrial parks, who keep that, who keep our businesses here, who keep that tax base for the city, the people who serve us at our restaurants and our shops, and the people who work in our community every day, whether it's for this organization or for some other service, are increasingly needing to live elsewhere. We're seeing the effects already of this now with businesses refusing to expand because they don't have the workforce to meet the needs, closing shop, or moving to another community altogether. And that trend over a long period of time runs a real risk to our city, especially to our tax base, as businesses move closer to their employees that are coming from Belleville, that are coming from Lenawee, and are coming from Tecumseh. We also know that we really struggle with the diversity of our housing market and the housing opportunities available to different people. Washaw County has an average rental unit rate of 40%. So across the county, about 40% of homes are rental. In Ann Arbor, it's about 50%. In Ipsy, it's 60%. But of all the communities I looked at, Dexter, Chelsea, Howell, and even Myland, all have higher number, a higher percentage of units for rent. We're dead last in the county for a percentage of units that we have that are rental, as opposed to owner-occupied. Allowing more density by right, it makes it easier for interested developers who want to come, who want to bring homes to Celine, who want to bring people to Celine, to bring proposals forward that are more inclusive, that are more diverse, and more attainable than the standard $400,000-plus homes and condos that we see brought before us more often than not. The next question is usually, but why don't we just bring affordable housing developers? Why don't we create a housing authority? Well, cities that are four to five times our size, three to four times our size, struggle to build, to build housing authorities that can make a dent in affordable housing. In addition, the issue isn't only just housing affordability, it's housing variety. We have a variety of naturally occurring affordable housing, many multifamily complexes, and they're great, they fit a need for our community, but they don't have the amenities that people are looking for, like in-unit laundry, or a dishwasher, or a carpet that's been replaced in the last 30 years. So there's a conversation there, too, about increasing the options that our residents have, our workforce has, and that our future residents will have when they're looking for a home in Celine. And then in addition, you know, I guess, going back to the point, we're never going to have enough money to generate a housing authority on our own, and it's constantly a conversation of a both-and. It's not giving up the idea of affordable housing developments. It's not giving up the idea of a housing authority, but it's recognizing that we need to build out density and do both. And loosening our regulations over the supply of housing will continue to review, to be, contribute into a reduction of price. It will add more diversity to our options and opportunities for our current residents and workforce alike. So I apologize that that was a little bit longer. But then just to go over the memo, I know there were some concerns that in the memo, I used examples primarily from Ann Arbor as opposed to using Celine and other communities. Ann Arbor publishes the number of units in each of their buildings. Not every community does that, and Ann Arbor also has a variety of new builds that are similar to other communities. So it's a little bit easier to show you a units per acre, what that looks like in different developments. But one of the main takeaways that I was trying to get out of that memo, to have you look at those examples and see what a unit per acre looks like, is that it's a kind of a deceiving measurement. I showed a six-unit brownstone building that's on a fifth of an acre. If you can do the quick math, that's about 30 units per acre. It's where my fiance lives, which is also why I know about it. But it's somewhat deceiving. It's a six-unit building that's covered in grass. There's trees on one side. There's very minimal parking that's located behind the building. But all those things that make it feel less dense are aesthetic questions. It's not about the units per acre. It's about how do we control the aesthetics? How do we build around the site to make it feel like it's part of the community? And that's the whole purpose of our site plan review process. We have a very elaborate process for looking at site plans, for making sure that these proposed developments fit into our communities and fit into our neighborhoods. And that is to say, there's not really a practical concern with density at 15 units per acre. And even in Ann Arbor, what we're talking about is 13 to 15 times the size of this. We're talking about 200-plus units per acres. You know, there's not a practical health or safety concern. There's not a livability concern. There's not even really a noise concern with modern building techniques. The issue comes in, does it fit into our community, and how are we landscaping it? And like I said, that's the whole purpose of our site plan standards. And then lastly, you know, I included a building there that was 300 units per acre, 200 units per acre roughly. It was 618 Main Street in Ann Arbor. It's right by Washaw Dariat, right as you drive to downtown. And I included that because often conversations about going from 10 units to acre to 15, or 15 to 20, generate kind of a hyperbolic argument that we're trying to be like somebody else, that we're trying to be like Ann Arbor, we're trying to be like Ipsilanti. And that's really not, that couldn't be further from the truth. That development's not financially viable in our city for a whole variety of different reasons. But what we're really talking about is allowing more people, is controlling the one thing we do, which is the supply of the housing in our community. So it's allowing more people to come live here, more people to share in what we've built, and more people to contribute to what we're planning to build in the future. And yeah, I think at the last point I'd leave with you is that this is a regional issue. It's not just us that's facing this. It's Chelsea, it's Dexter. We had a call around table today with these communities, with the county, with Ann Arbor Spark, and they all highlighted the same issues. They've, interestingly, other communities have found other ways to tackle the density issue by changing PUD standards, by changing their density standards. So there's progress being made. But we all have to do our fair share in making sure that we can afford, and that we, people in the future will be able to afford to live in our community. So with that, I'll take questions. And then I know the mayor and Mr. Gierbaum would probably like to talk about the planning meeting as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Harrington. Appreciate that analysis. Mr. Gierbaum, as a planning commission rep, anything you'd like to share at this time?
Yeah, the reason why I postponed or actually voted no on this was because, again, as I mentioned, the premise for this was directed by because of a developer basically wanting to redevelop the property on Monroe Street and asking for additional density. I, in fact, came up with a suggestion about changing this, but I did not anticipate it to be rushed through as fast as it has been without consideration. I appreciate Mr. Harrington's long justification, but again, it goes back to proper planning, appropriate notification, and understanding what's happening. We had a lot of time spent on that property, and this will become a by right change for that. And in fact, some of the locations, as I've been explained to me by the city manager, you know, we could potentially redevelop some of these other R3 locations, but it may be actually clearly needed that those should be even higher density, because, as mentioned earlier, the, the status of those facilities that are currently there needing to be addressed. I mean, one of the reasons we have concerns with housing is because of the failure of the landlords to maintain their properties, and the city to follow up and making sure that happens. We've adopted that reason, which I think is clear. It's not that I'm opposed to density or even this change. I just clearly want to make sure that what drives it is not a developer from a perspective of negotiation and not having the public have its clear input on how this changes. Again, tonight, you know, we had one hearing in front of Planning Commission, of course, Planning Commission, and we all know how well-attended that is, and the notification of this did not notify all of those individuals within that vicinity. This seems like a kind of a workaround, and I just simply would like to have more discussion done on this, and making sure other individuals within, you know, the community have the ability to mention this, and if it's reasonable with that, then we adopt it. But the speed at which we're doing this is another issue of which we talked about, is that we have a tendency not to pause. We have a tendency to rush something through, and I feel like this is that issue. So that was the reason why I voted no. Of course, there was a whole discussion by the rest of the planning saying, yes, we need to deal with the density. This may achieve issues. We talk about attainability and affordability. A lot of that was spoken because none of the other individuals knew really where this was generated from and how it occurred. And I felt that that was my reason for continuing to vote no on this until we have proper review of this. Thank you.
I, so we just have a philosophical disagreement. I voted yes, and process is important, but it's not more important than substance or outcome. And I think if you look at this issue through an objective lens, what's being recommended by, by staff is, is both reasonable and appropriate. I don't care who comes up with good ideas. I'm just looking for solutions that move the ball down the field, improve our regulatory framework, and bring us into the 21st century. So I thought Mr. Harrington's analysis on the issue was excellent. It was not unanimous, but it was a six-to-one vote at Planning Commission. I think substantively, this is, this is, this is good. And again, I'm always gonna, I'm always gonna come at issues from, from the perspective of let's debate the policy, not the process that got us to, to a good or bad policy, depending on your, your frame of mind. Now, in the spirit of comedy and compromise, if the group was amenable or deemed it appropriate to postpone action for a two-week period to garner a little bit of additional perspective from, from our constituents, I would be fine with that. But I think, again, if you look at this from any objective measure, based on the analysis that's been done by Mr. Harrington and what he articulated this evening, this is a good change that ought to be made. But if we want to provide our constituents, the public, more opportunity to engage with us, to provide additional comment in a two-week timeframe, I think that would be perfectly acceptable. And again, in the spirit of compromise, I would be willing to do that. I would welcome additional questions from, from the deists. Mr. Del Orco?
I'm gonna agree with Mr. Gierbaum on this issue. I think it's this kind of thinking that yielded an inordinate amount of grief with, grief with the last PUD at 207 Monroe Street for the better part of a decade. I think there are substantive arguments that can be made that increased density in R3A is not consistent with our current master plan. I'd like to have those discussions in a public forum. I, I think the one thing missing from your analysis, Mr. Harrington, was public input. What do the citizens think? I've happened to do extensive research on this issue in the years I've lived in Celine, and I, I can testify to the fact that there is not support for increased density in an area sandwiched between a city park and a historic neighborhood. So I would definitely welcome an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. This is not just a NIMBY situation for me personally. I'm here representing the citizens and the behalf of the neighborhood that I live in, and I've dealt, wrestled with this issue and this piece of property for far too long, and I want to see this executed properly. I do not support this in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Del Orco and council, if I may, so even, even without the increase, even just saying that the property is sold in this theoretical world to the developer, that you all will be able to choose because it's city-owned land, the allowed density on that property is 40 units. So if you think the difference between 40 units and 48 units would really be the difference in this particular scenario, and that they wouldn't be upset about 40 units on that same site by right, which is how the ordinance is already constructed, then, then I concur with your point, but...
Well, they will be. They will be upset, and they were upset with the last. And we got that reduced from 40 to 33, and there was still issue. And in fact, it never came to fruition. We need to be thinking differently. We don't want obtainable rent. We want attainable housing.
I mean, respectfully, I think one could argue that the likelihood that the development didn't come to fruition is precisely because the economics of it don't work. The economics of a 33-unit building on that site, we've been told by the development community, aren't attainable. I mean, you, we, we could get $400,000, $500,000 condos.
And if that's what you want, if that's what the neighborhood desires for that specific lot, like I said, you have full discretion over that. You have, you'll have the ability to review proposals for the site. We can rezone the site because the city owns it. This, this policy really has nothing to do with that site. It's about raising development standards across the city and seeing where you're all at on density, so that way maybe we can reevaluate the whole product and do this in an incremental step.
How many R3A zone properties are there in the city of Celine?
Probably about 20.
Okay, so I find it suspicious that these ordinances are being put before us now at the time of this ongoing negotiations with the developer. I don't have the luxury of being on the real estate committee. I was told that we were interested in looking and developing smaller square-foot homes for attainable housing. And then I'm coming to find out here that you're gonna, you want to put a high-rise apartment complex in between a park and a historic district. I'm just...
To be clear, Mr. Del Orco, that's not my intention. I have no say over who the city sells the land to. I'm trying to modify our codes to be more cumbersome and more, and more streamlined for future development. It has nothing to do with this specific though.
We have a philosophical disagreement. I don't think it's consistent with the master plan. I'm gonna maintain in that direction in my...
I would also just want to clarify for the public certification. No developer has approached us about building a high-rise at that location, and we clearly just set a standard that 35 feet is the maximum build. So, so there's, there's no high-rises going in Celine. I just, I know sometimes those kind of quips turn into social media posts that spiral out of control. So no, no high-rises going in Celine.
And I will concur with that. It was just the concern about the density and having a proper review for when that changes. And I just want to clarify again, that was my concern. But planning did not agree with that, so.
Yeah, I'm just representing community input, and the community input that I've gathered would, would not support increased density in this parcel. Or, you know, I can't speak to all the parcels in R3A, but 207 Monroe specifically, it's, it's a problem area.
Additional questions? Mr. Kamira Sulek, and then I'll jump to Mr. Seal.
Yes, thank you. I looked at the master plan a little bit, and I, I don't see how it fits with the master plan. And we're talking about aesthetics, and looking at all the parks that we have, there's, you know, around them, including People's Park, there's older, single or two-story, you know, dwellings with low density. I'm all for resident, you know, construction and increasing our tax base. But I concur with Mr. Del Orco's point of it, it doesn't really fit there. And it's across from a cemetery. And it, I think there's, I think there's better places to, to change that. I, I don't feel comfortable that it really fits with the community. You're gonna have, I don't know if it's, it's gonna be detached or attached. It's, it's not in keeping. It's gonna, you know, landscaping and how you do all that can, can help, but I don't see it...
So, again, if I can, I think we're diving into the details of a potential development that isn't even in front of us. that isn't even in front of us. That that issue, we've invited the developer to present on February 27th. I would encourage us to focus the questions on the aesthetic of the building and focus this conversation on zoning.
But the substance of the the proposed ordinance.
If I can add, Mr. Ferris.
We increase the zoning, and I'm sure developers will be much more interested.
Certainly, it's a more attractive lot at that point.
And I really I really doubt that more units, yes, it'll be less costly for the developer, but very little of that will be passed down to homeowners, to where I it's still not going to be attainable housing unless they unless they are building smaller units. But, you know, high density, I don't see that fitting in there and being part of the part of the master plan, not what I saw in the in the master plan. And so I think I think we need to be careful of if we're gonna make big changes in, you know, historic district and a park, and you have these 48 units on this, I can't remember offhand how many how many acres it is.
Roughly four-acre site.
Roughly four acres. That's and and a cemetery across the street that is very popular and.
So if I may, so first and foremost, the 2017 master plan, the most important document of any master plan, as I've said at the town halls that most of you have attended to, is the future land use map that is adopted as part of that, that that document and our zoning document, if they're incompatible, we can get sued over that. That's really the takeaway. And in that future land use map, that parcel you're talking about specifically is zoned or is slated to be multifamily housing. Now, once again, we're not talking about that specifically, and that parcel is something that we want to rezone. More power to us, and we have the absolute ability to rezone that parcel. We own it. We have the absolute absolute ability to deny any type of development occurring on that parcel if you want to remain it as an empty field with a large berm on it in perpetuity, and that's our prerogative. We have every ability to do whatever we want with that lot. Really, what this comes down to is that we have a fundamental issue in our city and in our region of not having enough supply of housing. And it's not necessarily about the cost savings of one specific renter at one specific property. It's about increasing density and increasing the supply of housing units across the county so that we offset some of the pressures we're facing from the Ann Arbor real estate market, from the the school districts drive on our real estate market, and from the general presence and growth of southeast Michigan. So the the issue isn't necessarily solving one. It's a very complex issue that involves increasing the supply of housing throughout the county and the participation of a variety of different communities in achieving that goal. And I'm proud to say that we had a meeting today with these communities that were interested in in achieving that, in increasing the supply of housing across all of our communities that that are typically more low-density and that had these standards that were developed in the 1970s and 80s based off false conceptions of how density works, so.
Then why are we having a broader conversation about changing all, you know, more of our zoning to increase the density?
As I said at the start of this, this is partly just to get your your temperature on it, and I I'm seeing where this is coming.
But then it seems suspicious that it's this property, and we know that we want to.
But it's not this property. It applies to several districts around the city. It applies to several properties around the city. It's not just this property, and we that property doesn't have any impending developments on it.
Right, but we're not talking about any other properties. So I don't think I don't think that's.
We are.
Okay, well, not not in this, and if you're trying to get the temperature, this seems like we're taking the cart before the horse and and a little too quick to where I don't feel comfortable that it that it fits aesthetically in as part of the community, and the benefits that could be are probably not gonna be making much of a difference.
Let me jump in here, because there's some there's some confusion, and so let's try to settle the confusion. If you have substantive issues with the ordinance that that's being proposed, that's fine, but to make the implication that it's that the proposed policy change is only going to affect one parcel is not accurate. So I just want to be clear on that. That that suggestion is is just wildly, with all due respect, is just wildly out of place in this in this discussion. So again, if you have philosophical differences or disagreements with ordinance number 848, that's fine, but it doesn't apply to just one particular property. Just want to be clear on that.
And if I may, from staff's perspective, we we want to know the answer to the question if council wants us to look more holistically at improving density throughout the city. This, no one will debate that the question came to us from an outside source in terms of this particular type of zoning, but the question broadly remains, we would like to find a way to address attainability, accessibility to housing within our community, and the tool that we have at our disposal is increasing density.
I think I think that's that's very well stated. I'm gonna go back to something that that my colleague and friend articulated early in this discussion. Obviously, he and I have a respectful disagreement on this particular policy, but the suggestion that was made about having some sort of town hall or event in which we could engage the public, not only on this proposed ordinance change, but on the topic of of density more broadly, I think would be very appropriate and worthwhile. I think that insight would would benefit not only staff but but council, and then it would alleviate the concerns that the public hasn't had an opportunity to engage in this issue.
Right.
Yes, go ahead.
Move to postpone till the last meeting in February.
We actually have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt. Can I take that motion first, Mr. Seo, and then come back to your motion to postpone?
Okay.
Okay, we have a simple motion on the floor moved by Gierba, seconded by Dylan to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We do have a motion appropriately worded by our colleague, Mr. Seo, to postpone to our second consideration to our second meeting in February, which would be February the 27th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. And then again, just to to wrap this up, Mr. Harrington, I would be looking for you to take the lead on this and to find a time somewhere between tonight and the 27th to host a forum, ideally here. I think it would be great if we could video record that and livestream it, talk about this proposed ordinance, but also the ramifications and and/or potential benefits of increasing density more broadly in the community. Absolutely.
Would that town hall be ahead of the scheduled meeting or after?
As I said, I'd like to have it before.
Okay.
I'd like to have it scheduled sometime between tonight and the 27th.
Okay.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Mr. Seo.
Yes, I just want to say that, well, to the motion, no, in particular, but to the topic, yes. We continually talk about trying to have more affordable housing, the need for affordable housing, the need to attract a diverse neighborhood to our community. I think this is one way to achieve it.
Good. Ms. Rice, then Ms. Dylan, then back to Mr. Gierba.
I would like to echo Mr. Seo here. I want to express my appreciation for the enthusiasm and the backwork that you you have done on this, Mr. Harrington. I think we talk a lot about DEIA and the goals, and we've had a lot of forums about DEIA in our community, and one of the things that continuously comes up is housing. So with that, this is not a topic that I believe we should grab at low-hanging fruit. So I do think that it is a topic that we should bring back to the community, get community input, make sure that we are matching it with our master plan. But again, I do appreciate the enthusiasm. I think this is a thoughtful first step. I appreciate you bringing it to council. I understand the resistance from some of our council members, and I think that just goes to show that we're all passionate for this. So I I appreciate giving us a little bit more time to get some more community input and then think of this for a little bit.
Very good. To Ms. Dylan, and then to Mr. Gierba.
Thank you. First, I just want to start by saying, just for me, density does not equate to affordable housing by any means. Look to Ann Arbor for that. So I I just want to make that statement there. What I would like to see, Mr. Harrington, is understanding what we have for the R31 areas, highlight those big maps, and target the areas that are within those and around those, and make sure that those people know that this is what we're looking at doing so that at least we have a jump-off point. My one question for you is that, so would an existing R33A, excuse me, would they be able to increase their density at that point?
So most of them are bound by a singular common area that was submitted as a site plan. Many of them were originally brought in under PUDs, so no, they would have to go through a whole nother site plan process, at which point it could be effectively eliminated. So in in some offshoot chance, if they could add, structurally speaking, another story, or if they could rearrange a large section of their site by buying people out, R3As primarily condos with some with some lower lower-density multifamily rentals, I should say. So yes, to answer your question, technically, they could if they could manage that, but it's it's very difficult to do a complete site, especially when the owners are divided. You have many different owners of of a site. And to your question about density and the cost, I would encourage you all to take a look at the empirics of of building housing units across a region. It's not so much Ann Arbor building density, lowering the price. It really has to do with a lot of units over a large area, and there are there are numerous empirics, it's what my degree is in, that study that exactly and show that in the only real way you can lower the cost of housing is by increasing the supply unless you have a lot of tools that are not available to a city of our size.
Mr. Gierba.
And I want to clear, Mr. Harrington, your information is exactly what we want to hear. It's, again, as the mayor had to mention earlier, we may disagree. Part of my concern has always been process, and we know with a number of our developments, including one right now, that has been pulled from the agenda because it has to completely be reassessed because of fire access and such with that. I want to make sure what we're doing moving forward. A number of these R3As were backed into because that's how we had to get to it when we actually started doing zoning and so forth. I think there's a number of locations and things that, as we look at it, it's like, yes, this makes sense for the entire RA3, except when you look at one property that's gonna be impacted by it. And unfortunately, that started driving this, and that's where my concern has been. I want to increase density in this town, but I think, as I discussed with the city manager, there are other locations where we need to start talking about, I believe she said, zero lot lines and some of those type of things where we can increase the density of our downtown, not only housing, but for commercial and other things. So this is a bigger picture, and I know there are some small wins, and we can consider this. It's just there's a number of things related to the RA3 that could trigger a whole lot of things, even though we still own the property. I just don't want to get into it at this point.
And I guess just to clarify, is there a consensus among council that we should change the zoning of that specific property? Because right now, by right, it's 40 units per acre. I'm sorry, it's 40 units over that over that area. So is there a consensus that that should be?
Up to 40 for that parcel, correct?
Up to, no, that should be higher if they were single, one bedrooms, but.
Okay.
Is there a consensus amongst council that we should act in changing that zoning if that's not indicative of multifamily developments, which was spelled out in the 2017 master plan?
I mean, from my perspective, if I may speak, we changed that zoning that would allow up to that at the current zoning. If you were to change it and allow this change to go through, it'll allow 48 units, correct?
As opposed to 40.
As opposed to 40. So I think there was consensus, well, from, I don't know what it is now, with past councils, that 40 was adequate for that property and could be achieved. If they wanted, if someone buys it and wants to change it or wants to proceed with it, they need to present us with a proposal, and we need to consider what it actually is.
Yeah.
So as you said, it's our property. I don't think there's a change to push it less density, but if it's going to be more density to achieve some of these goals, as you've mentioned, it needs to be discussed further, and that's my concern.
He and Mayor Pro Tem Gierba, who, of course, has been the Planning Commission rep and served very well on Planning Commission for more than a decade, he and I are actually in agreement on that point. I I don't see value, at least at this juncture, in changing the zoning that would allow for less than 40 units. I think the the current zoning is is sufficient, but, you know, I'm reticent to engage deeply on that because I don't have a formal proposal from a from a developer to to review. But right now, based on the information I I have, I would I would be inclined to maintain the status quo. Councilmember Dylan, any thoughts on that?
I don't know that I want to go back and muddy the water and change that.
All right, Mr. Seo.
No, I'm I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Kamira Sulek.
I'd like to keep it as it is.
Okay, Mr. Del Orco.
R3A is what it's zoned, it's what it should stay.
Okay, Councilmember Rice.
I agree, it should stay.
At least at the present time, maintain the zoning. If there's nothing further on the motion, then move by Seo and seconded by Kamira Sulek, we're gonna call for a vote. It's been properly moved to postpone this issue to February 27th, our our second regular meeting in February on February 27th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, noting that we will have a forum or town hall to discuss the this issue and the issue of density more broadly sometime between now and then. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move on to new business item 23-18, Oakwood Cemetery retaining wall along US 12. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Clerk Royal and the minutes of the January 12, 2023 Cemetery Board, and to approve or not to approve the option two estimate from Fleece Vanderbrink in an amount not to exceed $89,390.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gierba to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seo. Clerk Royal, I'm gonna let you give a an initial analysis, and then, Mr. Seo, I will defer to you as our chair of the Cemetery Board. I'd also like somebody, if if Mr. Schurles would like to get in on this, that would be great. I would also like somebody to comment because this was brought up at our agenda meeting last Wednesday. We are talking about the retaining wall on US 12, not the wall on Monroe Street, although the wall on Monroe Street also probably requires a long-term fix, but realistically, probably something short-term as well. So I'd like some obligatory comment made as part of the public record regarding the Monroe Street retaining wall as well. You kicking it off?
Yes, Mayor. I worked with Chris Benedict and Fleece and Vanderbrink to actually get all three, actually four, specific retaining walls evaluated as we've seen them in a less than brand-new condition. I think the I think FNV did a great job of providing a menu of options, and those options were vetted with Chris Benedict and staff and the engineer to give us the best life cycle plus maintainability plus aesthetic look that that our Cemetery Board desired.
Very good. Clerk Royal, any comment?
There is a difference between the prices on the quotes, and it was the second, the option two is what the board went with, and that is because the first option was less expensive, but it's removing wood and replacing it with wood, and it won't last.
Yeah.
So I just.
And so for the public's justification, the proposal two is removing wood and replacing it with brick?
I don't think it's called.
Blocks, excuse me.
Blocks, yeah.
Yeah. Something that aesthetically would would sort of mirror the 2011, 2012 expansion that took place a little further to the west.
Correct, and there was a third option also that was disregarded.
Yeah, and could you clarify the third option?
The third option did not match aesthetically, and it cost more.
Concrete.
That was poured-in-place concrete at $100,310.
Similar lifetimes in the.
Similar life, similar lifestyle.
I know you got a bunch of questions. I want to get to our Cemetery Chair first to to provide a little bit of synopsis on this. So, Mr. Seo, the floor is yours.
First of all, that wall does need to be replaced. It's made out of wood now. The wood is rotting, and it's deteriorating, and hopefully, it won't cause that bank to slide. I think that the the chances right today are slim on that, but it it needs work. So Fleece and Vanderbrink looked at it. They gave us three options. First one was wood. We don't want to go right back to where we are now. Second one was the concrete block, which, as Mr. Schurles has stated, is very similar to what already exists along Michigan Avenue. And the third option was poured concrete on a probably a a KPI gravel base, and we thought that poured concrete wouldn't be wouldn't have any option to to flex or move at all with the weather and that the block would provide the the best bang for the buck, even though it is more than the wood. But it will last longer, we think, and 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 match. Now, just to be clear, this is the wall that faces into the cemetery, and it's probably only about a foot or two tall all along, yeah, all along the.
The border.
It goes from the north-east corner of the cemetery back over almost to the where the driveway comes out on the Michigan Avenue.
Okay.
The other retaining wall on Monroe Street is being contrasted by Fleece Vanderbrink, and another option's been brought to us, but we didn't actually understand very well the what they were proposing. I think there are four different options there. We're gonna have a meeting this week, Thursday, with a representative from Fleece Vanderbrink to so that we, at least on the Cemetery Board, understand better how that would be accomplished and before we come to council. We wanted to be more knowledgeable before we made a recommendation to council in that regard.
Just wanted to make sure for the record that things are still progressing on this.
Yes, they are, indeed.[1760.01] Yes, they are, indeed. And matter of fact, we'd probably bring you a recommendation in the next council meeting or two.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. CEO?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gierbach, questions?
Yeah. That wall, okay, that was the difference I asked about between the first, the second proposal and the third proposal. So the lifespan of it is not going to be any different by pouring a solid wall?
Not enough to make up for what we would be getting. The unilock-type block is going to be as efficient, or lifecycle as much as we need for that concrete, and it's just going to fit all of our, it's going to check all of our boxes on what we want there.
And I kind of assumed that that location, being a smaller wall and everything, that would suffice.
Yeah.
It's my bigger concern. There isn't any concern with the wall that we built when we expanded the cemetery at this time, is there?
No.
Not at all, okay. And who else? Did we have many bids respond back to this?
We haven't bid it.
Oh, we haven't-
This is the engineer's estimate.
This is an estimate. Thank you. No mistake.
Additional questions, Mr. Camer Sulek? And then I'll jump to Councilmember Dillon, or Mayor Protim Dillon.
I'm glad we're entertaining this, because this is definitely a need. So, option two with the interlocking blocks, that will allow for expansion and contraction?
Yes.
But, and the poured concrete would not? Or is there a way for them-
It's going to have a foundation. It would last. It would last. It would, it lasts as long as the interlocking block.
Okay. Well, it looks to me that option two makes the most sense.
It really does. And the board, the board discussed it. I mean, the only thing we're missing is the visual pictures. I wish we would have had the renderings, but-
Okay. Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. So, the wall on Monroe Street, I think that is block? Like, didn't we block something in?
It's blocked, and it's been plastered over with some kind of a cement.
Yeah, it's blocked, like, it was like stairs that we blocked, and then we'd sort of plaster it over to make it sort of look prettier. But we've had nothing but problems with that.
Correct, for decades.
So, is that just a poor process, or is that the result of block should not be used in that situation?
I can't speak up.
And I'm not asking about that situation, because that was long before you were here, and it's covered under a lot of layers, so you probably haven't actually seen it yet. My question is, would there be any opportunity that we would have issues with block here?
This retaining wall and that retaining wall are not even in the same ballpark of what they're holding up. They're just not even on the same scope.
And I'm sorry, because I can't visualize this in my head, as much as I drive by it 100 times a day. Is the fencing attached to this?
No.
There's a small gap. There's a small gap in between the fence and the wall.
Okay. So does the fencing have to be removed in order to do anything?
If it does, it wouldn't be that much of an issue. We're going to get our pea-stone base under the block. We're going to have a whole lot easier time maintaining it, as far as our weed whipping and everything. There was a lot of consideration put in on a little short wall.
The reason I bring up the fencing is it needs a little bit of love and attention also. It's got some pieces that are broken. It definitely needs some paint. It needs a little bit of help. So if there's an opportunity to add that into the project, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to it.
Has that been discussed at the Cemetery Board?
Well, it hasn't been discussed at the Board, but I know, adjacent to my property now, part of a tree fell and broke some of the spindles off the top of the fence and bent it. So when Dan Bennett was still up there working in the cemetery, I hailed him, and he came over and he looked at it, and he said, unfortunate thing is that the manufacturer of that fence doesn't exist anymore. So it's, we can't get replacement parts for it.
With the Board's approval, we can look at some kind of either repair or replacement or a cost difference, COFs, analysis of both.
Yeah, we can go take a look and see.
I think it would be a good idea to add it to the agenda in one of your upcoming meetings. Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else on, we just have a motion to acknowledge receipt. Mr. Gierbach?
Just curious, if we're going to be looking at the other wall on Monroe Street, are we going to try and bid that out with this project, or are these two different seats?
No, the scope of these are so different, Mr. Gierbach. They're very different. This is, this is a little, small wall. There's four options. They'll be explained at the Board meeting, and we'll come back with a solid recommendation.
Do you believe this $89,000 is more than enough to build this? It seems-
There's a contingency built into that. 20% contingency.
Yeah. Yeah, we think it is. We think it is. I gotta, I gotta trust that we've got some good numbers to go on. I would hate to come in and not, not be in the range where we can actually get a contractor to do it.
It just seems a bit high, but I know how things are right now. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor just to acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Gierbach, seconded by CEO. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve option two?
Move to approve.
To approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Moved by Mayor, or Councilmember Gierbach, excuse me. Old habits die hard. Seconded by Mayor Protim Dillon. Is there any additional discussion? There appears to be none. All those in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-19, DPW truck purchase. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from DPW Director Scherls, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a new 2024 tandem axle truck from Tri County International Truck of Jackson, Michigan.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Okay, it's just been moved to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Dillon. Director Scherls, do you care to comment?
Well, this is one that we're just going to have some discussion on for sure. I need to get us in line to purchase this truck. I can't guarantee when we're going to get delivery of this truck. We've built in a hefty contingency, because I can't get a real guarantee, because this is going to definitely carry over a fiscal year before the truck is possible to be delivered. This truck comes as a rolling chassis that was carefully specked out by our motor pool foreman, Alex Link, and we will then have a buildup. With that, with that cost, we would also come back to council to, to give you that option to what we're going to do on the buildup. The truck was previously budgeted in around the $250,000 range. I'm not sure that's going to get us there. We might be a little bit shy, but we'll have about 18 months to find that out.
Good. Questions for DPW Director Scherls? Mr. Gierbach is the mover of the motion to acknowledge receipt. Would you like to begin?
Just, you know, we also, we also had looked at leasing in the past and such, but this is not a type of situation where we would lease it or, or lease it?
No, this truck will be replacing a truck that we still use, say, that's from 1995. We're going to get a long life of, long, hard life out of this one.
Is that a Chevy?
International. You got me. We have, we have a couple different, like Sterling International, the bigger trucks. This is a Ford.
Good.
Anything else, Mr. Gierbach?
No, thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Protim Dillon?
So, first, just sort of looking at the financial summary page, and it sort of goes through factory list price of $269, $729, and then there's less customer allowance of $153. What exactly does that mean?
That's, that's the MyDeal Collective. So they're expecting to sell a huge volume of trucks to municipalities. That would be their WINK, recommended manufacturer's price, which-
So like, if like, Bob's company went there, they would have charged them $269 for that truck?
Yes.
For that chassis? Wow. That's, that's an amazing thing. The, this proposal is dated October 20, so it's more than 60 days old. Is it still valid?
Yes.
Okay. I know that usually we try to move through those pretty quickly. And so, we're going to budget for, just to help me get through this, so we're budgeting and paying for the $128 now for the chassis. We're going to, do we get to pay for that now at today's price, or do we not get it until we pay for it, until it gets delivered?
The added $10,000 is if there's an increase on the collective next year.
Okay.
And I do anticipate some increase on the MyDeal Collective.
Okay. And so, what, which budget are we paying this out of, and then which budget are we paying the actual-
It'll be 24 before we pay.
So are we paying both pieces out of the 24 budget?
I don't think we'll get, I don't think we'll get the outfit until 25, because we won't have the truck physically in our possession before then. I mean, in time.
And at any point, do we need this truck?
Yes.
No, not that we don't need it sooner than, I had quite finished it. Like, what is our timeframe for this? Like, are we going to be down a vehicle?
As long as we can keep our old girl on the road, we'll be okay. We do have, we do have some flexibility with our smaller trucks to accommodate when a, when a larger truck is down. And not every snowfall calls for an all-hands-on-deck, large fleet.
Okay. And then, this is coming out of our new equipment revolving fund?
Yes.
Does that empty that fund out?
Nope. This was fully accounted for in FY '24, so actually spreading it over FY ' '24 and '25 will help the cost.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions for DPW Director Scherls? Councilmember Camer Sulek?
Yes, thank you. So this is a supply chain issue, or where they have to have enough people ordering these trucks to get the special deal?
It's a shortage of trucks.
Okay. So we might have this around the same time that the wastewater treatment plant is up and running?
Maybe.
And just, just so, just so that I understand, there's going to be other upcharges?
Upfit. We're getting a rolling chassis. We're getting a rolling chassis, so we're going to want a dump box on it. We're going to want an underbody on it. We're going to want a front plow on it, radio, all the-
Third-party add-ons, yeah.
Yeah. Everything we need to make it work for us.
And what kind of, what kind of cost is that going to run? Ballpark, range?
About, about another $150.
So, actually the original price. But I, but I understand. And to Ms. Dillon's point, 1995, is that going to, is that going to make it? And what happens if we have a big snowfall? Is it going to dramatically affect not just snow plowing, but all the multiple uses of this truck?
It's not our only dump truck. It gets babied. We'll keep her, we'll keep her going.
Okay, all right.
Duck tape.
Is the 95 a Ford?
It is. It's a Ford.
I believe it's this L8000 as well. I believe it is. Of course, I didn't put it in here.
No, it's there.
Yes, it's there.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Camer Sulek, any additional questions?
No, that helps my confidence level. Thank you.
Councilmember Rice, please?
Just quickly, for the public record and knowledge, what do you use a truck like this for?
Just about everything. This is plowing, plowing the streets. This is picking up leaves, taking them to leaf yard. This is hauling off slop from a water main break, or spoils from a water main break, and hauling in fresh material. This is pulling trailers for our mowers. Absolutely everything in public works.
So these types of trucks are key to the EPW operation across the board?
I probably should have called it a frontline truck. It is a full-on frontline truck for DPW. All aspects of DPW.
There are no additional questions. There is a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Gierbach, seconded by Mayor Protim Dillon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve?
I'm moving to approve with up to an amount of $139,000.
To approve the purchase of a new 2024 tandem axle truck from Tri County International of Jackson, Michigan, at an amount not to exceed $139,000. Is that correct, Mr. Gierbach?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. Is there any additional discussion? There appears to be none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. You better hang tight, Mr. Scherls. You're up next. You've got a third item as well. So this will be Agenda Item 23-20, inline sewer treatment. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from DPW Director Scherls, and to approve or not to approve the annual service agreement from, I wrote on the agenda, I'm sorry, is it Agonics?
Agonics.
Agonics Incorporated for inline sanitary pretreatment. Is there a motion to acknowledge and to approve or not to approve?
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, it's just been moved by Mayor Protim to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gierbach. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Camer Sulek. Mr. Scherls, the floor is yours.
Okay. The inline sewer treatment is basically an application in the pipe and in the sanitary lift station wet wells to apply the biobugs, to encourage the, it's a, it's a bacteria bugs that gets rid of organics, BOD, H2S gases, all the things that either are hard to treat out or has to be treated at endpoint, and also create issues with the gases that corrode our sewer system and structures. So we will reduce the amount of time it takes us and how, the number of, and the frequency of cleaning out wet wells while the whole time is we're, as the sewer's just flowing naturally down to the treatment plant, it has time to address the same process at the endpoint. At endpoint, all that BOD needs to be pulled out anyway. This will, this will give it, it's basically like added contact time, as it's going from entry into the sewer to endpoint treatment. We treat in strategic pipe and sanitary wet wells. I don't know if I explained that very well.
I thought that was good. Yeah. Questions for DPW Director Scherls? Let me start with Mr. Del Orco, and then I'll jump to Mr. CEO.
Larry, I don't believe the city has used anything like this in the past. Is this a proprietary chemical?
This is, this chemical is proprietary, yes.
Okay, so, the only question that I would have, if there's any downstream implications for how it might affect our permit limits with the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant?
It should absolutely improve our affluent number.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. CEO?
Is this something we apply ourselves?
No, the contractor puts it in.
Okay, and then, how often do they have to do that?
Monthly.
Okay. Is this something that stays in the wet well, or stays in the sewer? Does it get flushed through with everything else?
Ultimately, the reason we have to reapply monthly is ultimately, it ends at the plant, and hopefully, if everything's going right, it's doing the job that's going to be happening at the plant anyway of decreasing the BOD in it, in the sewer.
So, so once you introduce this to the wet well, there's some residual that stays in the wet well, or does it just immediately flush through?
It's not just in the wet well. We also have it, so it's on these little, little strings, ropes. The tablet actually sits in the channel, the sewer pipe channel. So it's, the sewage is flowing over it and dissipating over time. But there's a specific portion of it in the wet wells.
Okay.
Right? That's the part where it's lowering our, our labor on keeping them clean. But the treatment, the pretreatment, it's, the sewer's flowing over the bugs to start the process prior to even getting to endpoint.
And that's all done by the third party?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Camer Sulek, and then Councilmember Mayor Protim Dillon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to see that this will reduce labor costs. Do you, are there other communities or studies that have shown how much it has reduced it? So, I mean, assuming that it's going to reduce our labor costs by at least $76,476, but-
Well, it won't just be the labor. It's also the corrosive gases that are going to be reduced, and the, the cost at endpoint treatment. So there's three phases of-
Less affluent?
Yeah. And I could get you a list of communities that are using this exact service. I know two right off the top of my head, Livonia and Southfield. They've been using this for a couple years and had a lot of success. Strength of flow becomes an issue when you're giving your sewer to another, another group to treat. So you got to kind of make sure that you keep that happy.
And this same group is servicing these other communities?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I could get you a client list.
How about a Krabby Patty sample?
I don't think you want to eat this Krabby Patty.
Sounds like a urinal mint, actually.
It looks like one.
Anything else, Mr. Camer Sulek?
No, sir.
No, Councilmember, Mayor Protim Dillon?
So, this is going to be $76,000 a year forever and always?
Yes.
We're going to have to find now in the budget to add in. Are we committed beyond a year?
We're not committed.
Because what I'd want to see is some sort of measurable. Is that even possible?
It is.
To see kind of what it's going to look like for us?
It is possible, and we're not committed past month to month. It's a service agreement.
And then, the other piece to it is, as we bring the new wastewater treatment plant online, will we still need this? I mean, is this more just for our pipes, or is it for, because I'm trying to understand, is it a process, or is it end?
It's both. It's both, but there is two elements. Once the plant is rehabbed, I don't think that the endpoint BOD is going to be that big of a deal. All I would be more concerned with is keeping the grease cake under control inside our wet wells. So there's two, there's two portions of it, if you, you see the proposal. When the plant's rehabbed and happy, and we're not having issues with our affluent being over limits, well, I guess let's correct that. Let's see if the requirements for that affluent goes down. If the standards, the requirements from Eagle come down, maybe that would be a reason that you'd continue it. But while the treatment plant's under the rehabilitation process, I think it's best to send them the easiest-to-treat final product that we can.
How often do we clean the lift stations?
Monthly, every two months, quarterly, all depends.
Okay, I, I, I'm struggling with this. I, I understand the process, but at a time when we've got so many things going, I, I almost hate to introduce something else into that process, because it's like we've kind of got a lot of issues. And I don't want another thing to point at to say, well, could that have been part of the issue? So that's where I'm kind of struggling with this right now, is, is it the right timing for us?
I mean, I, I get that. I thought this was probably the best timing on the planet when we're going through that rehab, was to bring in the easiest product at endpoint.
Thank you.
One last question, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Mentioned also about this helps reduce hydrogen sulfide. I noticed Ann Arbor just introduced where they put equipment in that actually oxygenates the sewer flow, so that it supposedly doesn't create that. Your purpose with this is though really just to break down the organic material, so that when it reaches the plant, it isn't as much of a problem?
The H two S is more for the collection system and the lift stations.
Okay.
Yep.
But you wouldn't put something in that similar to what this, it's not oxygen issue, it's dissolving or whatever that's in there?
Yeah, yeah, this, this, this is taking the, taking control and controlling the H two S gases in the pipe and the lift stations, not at endpoint.
Which, which I understand. I didn't know if there was other things that you can do besides the tablets to achieve the same thing of what you're mentioning. You have to know what's in the sauce.
In my, in my career, I've used more than one method to different levels of success. I know the, the monthly lift station cleaning where I used to work went to, we cleaned it just because we should, not because we needed to.
Yeah, and this has nothing to do with, we're still going to have problems with flushable wipes, so no matter what?
Yeah.
The only thing that's helped is some of the organic digestion or whatever.
Yeah.
No, I just mentioned it because I noticed they installed something in Ann Arbor, which is a oxygenator, which is supposed to achieve a similar type of result, because they had problems with flow stagnating and not moving through the pipes.
Was, was that in lift stations, do you know?
Combination. It's wherever their silo township connected in the Ann Arbor sewer system, but they were having the smell coming up through the drains, well, through the drains, whatever, the manholes, similar to what we've kind of experienced.
Gotcha.
Hoping this will help achieve some of that.
Yeah, there, there is an odor control element to this, too.
And I think this is a great thing to introduce, at least if this is going to help us in the interim, so we can reduce some of the concerns that could happen during the actual renovation of the plant.
And it is measurable. I mean, Bill already takes his samples.
Yeah, Bill had mentioned it, I spoke to him earlier before this.
Yeah.
Good. Well, if there's nothing further, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Dillon, seconded by Gearbaugh, simply to acknowledge receipt. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
No, that's all right.
Okay, good, and you'll have an opportunity at the, the next motion. Moved by Dillon, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by CO to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulak. Mr. Seal, did you want to make a comment?
Just, I read about the Ann Arbor effort that they're just now undertaking. I'm wondering, you say that this may diminish some of the odor that comes out of the sewer naturally?
Yes.
I don't think we understand how much gas there actually is generated in these sewers. I know one time in Ann Arbor, working in the police department, one of the officers stuck a flare in the edge of the rim of the sewer, and it blew that steel lid about twenty feet up in the air like a giant flipping a coin.
Not too bright.
No, he didn't get hurt, but I mean, he said it was quite a sight to see, that big flame and everything else. So there's a lot of gas in those sewers, and, and I'm wondering sometimes, too, if that doesn't contribute some of the smell that we get complaints about, too.
Sure it does, that sure does.
Just a friendly amendment, can we include the dollar amount?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, for any amount not to exceed seventy-six five hundred.
And we, and this is only month to month, so if we're not seeing measurables that we're expecting?
Mr. Kamira Sulak, do you accept the dollar amount as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Seal, I assume you're, you're in agreement?
Yes.
Is there any additional discussion, noting now the dollar amount has been included in the motion? It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Kamira Sulak to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move now to the two items that were moved from the consent agenda, and actually they were not on the consent agenda in sequential order based on number, so we'll go to the dam issue first. So it's Agenda Item twenty-three dash twenty-two, resolution on dam. This will be a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Move to approve.
To adopt.
Adopt.
Okay, moved by Gearbaugh to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Ms. Dillon, I believe you're the one who requested this be removed. Do you have a comment or question?
I do. I just wanted to make sure, I think this is a very important issue in our community. Sorry, I have a cough drop. And I just wanted to make sure that it was taken beyond just the consent agenda. It will impact our entire community, especially those residents that live on the west side. I have been told by our city engineer that doing this project does not commit the city to removing the dam, it's just a first step in exploration of it, so I like to remind the community of that, that there is still options for looking at rehabilitating what we have, together with also the option of removal of the dam. This will hopefully provide significant understanding of what our community would look like without the dam. So I am looking forward to that piece of it, to be able to make a fully educated decision.
City Engineer Humphreys or City Manager O'Toole, do you care to make a brief comment regarding this proposal?
I can comment. Yes, to Councilmember Dillon's point, the city's not committing yet to a specific course of action. We need to do additional due diligence. All this action is, is asking for council to support a resolution for staff to apply for a grant, so it's not even approving the study yet. We are simply applying four dollars to help us support a study occurring. If that is approved, there would be subsequent action to then award the, you know, contract for the study to some other group. And I assume an output, a very significant output of that study would be public information.
Absolutely. I think that's a, a critical piece. I think we all agree on that. Is there any discussion or additional questions? Then we have a motion on the floor, moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Rice, to adopt the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the last action item of the evening, which is twenty-three dash twenty-three, Celine Youth Council Bylaw Amendment. This will be a motion to approve the recommended changes to the youth council bylaws.
I have a point of clarification. As the attachment does-
I gotta get a motion first, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know how you can do a motion when the information may not be accurate on the attachment.
Well, why don't you just do a motion then to acknowledge receipt?
Acknowledge receipt.
Okay, moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulak. Please raise your concern, Mr. Gearbaugh.
Yeah, clarification as to what the language is on the attachment did not unfortunately have it on it. It was crossed out, but it didn't have the replace warning.
The replacement was in red, and it reads, "An excused absence will mean an S Y C member has communicated to the chairperson or staff liaison in verbal or written manner their intention not to attend a duly-called meeting. After three unexcused absen-, after three excused absences, the S Y C chairperson shall request from the mayor to have that member resign." So the, the premise behind this change in the bylaw, this is actually a, a learning experience for our youth council. We were having a lot of kids apply and were, were appointed to the youth council and then not showing for meetings, just using this as a resume builder, but not actively joining in on the youth council. And we were trying, or the, the youth council was trying to enforce kids attending the youth, the youth council meetings. So mind you, these are once-a-month meetings from September until May, and they generally last forty-five minutes to an hour at the max, and so the, the youth council now wants to be very strict in, in getting people to attend the meetings.
And I'm fine with that. My concern was actually the document. I'm not sure we were running into problems reading where that actual language was. So this is not necessarily what you're moving forward. But the other concern was, this addresses issues with absenteeism that we also are facing with our other commissions. While you've moved forward to address that, there's a similar thing, a concern, that I would like to see happen with the remainder of all our other commissions to address that.
I think there's, if I recall correctly from previous discussions, either as a group or on an individual or small group basis, and I'm directing this to the city manager at this time, I do think that's something that we want all of our boards and commissions and staff liaisons to look at, is strong language in all of our bylaws for our various boards and commissions that encourage active participation, reporting proactively forthcoming absences, and then language that if an individual accumulates a certain number of absences, that, that action be taken to remove. And the one verbiage change that I would recommend for this is the last sentence talks about the chair will notify the mayor after the accumulation, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing now, after the accumulation of three absences, read that statement for me.
Says, "The S Y C chairperson shall request from the mayor to have that member resign."
Okay, I would, I would change the word resign to remove.
Remove.
Resign implies some, resignation is a voluntary thing.
Okay.
It'd be great to get them to resign voluntarily, but if somebody's accumulating absences, not responding to communications, or is refusing to resign, I think we want the right, the council needs the right to remove.
Okay.
And that's earlier in the, in it as well. At the top, there's also, we want the, the S Y C member shall request from the mayor to have the member resign after three unexcused. So we want that to read removed as well.
And I think this, yes. I, I think there's an implication that I want to state, too, which is the mayor's office doesn't have the right to remove people from boards and commissions.
Okay.
What the mayor would do is, is simply add that to a consent agenda with a corresponding memo, saying, "This individual has accumulated absences, they're refusing to resign, I'm requesting that they be removed from the roster of the youth council." If, if we move forward with, with revised by law changes for other boards and commissions, then it could apply to the environmental commission, planning, Z P A, et cetera. That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just change that last word to, to be removed.
Okay, yeah, very good. Again, resignation is the, is the ideal outcome in a situation like that, but if they, they do not resign, I think we want the right to, to remove. Are there any additional questions for Director Scruggs? Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. Just kind of continuing the conversation that the mayor had started, and this will be directed to the city manager. At one point, we had talked about having a form, so that we had some continuity between bylaws for all of our committees. And I feel like the cemetery board of appeals may have been sort of the model for that. Have we conveyed that to all of these committees? Because this is not the first time that somebody's changed their bylaws, and I want to make sure, because also in this one, there's talks about meetings, and they have to be noted as forty-eight hours, which I thought the standard is eighteen hours, just so that we have that continuity, that everybody sort of understands what the expectation is going between committees?
We have conveyed that the cemetery board is kind of the, the template, the most recent template that we've used. As new bylaws have been created, that's been used as the template, although now the cemetery board will need to take the lead on updating its absenteeism policy, so it can keep that, you know, pedestal spot for itself, as, as the be-all and end-all of best bylaws in the city.
And so that sort of, to, to, to add on to that, is, is that what the body feels, this body feels, is that three is the right number? Is there something, and, you know, excuse versus unexcused? I mean, I appreciate that things come up in life, and we, we all are going to miss meetings, but if you have three excused absences, and due to that, we don't have a quorum, then that causes issues, too. So kind of understanding and, like, clarifying that, like, you know, I, I get that we're excusing them and saying, yes, we understand you're not going to be here, you just weren't a no-show, but that still doesn't help us as a committee. So I, I want to kind of be mindful of that, too.
Unless anyone objects, I think three is actually a decent standard. The, the one exception, or the one, that one board that, that may present some challenges with, is planning, because they, they, unlike almost all of our other boards, they meet by monthly, with the exception of, of November and December, although this past November, they did meet twice. I think for the most part, that, as I look back, Mr. Gearbaugh, I'm referring to him, because of course he's a planning commission rep and has been for the better part of a decade, as I look back on my tenure on planning commission, which I think goes back to two thousand and eleven as a council member, I, I think of maybe a few occasions where an individual may have accumulated more than three absences a year. For the most part, I don't think it will prove problematic.
I mean, luckily for that group, you have enough people in order, you need a quorum, so absences don't impact that as much as where we have some of our other committees, where if you don't have four votes, you can't do the meet, do the group. No, the only time we had a situation was there were individuals that left for Florida for four months, and that does cause a problem, but that was accommodated because it was a large enough group.
Unless people object, I think three is reasonable.
Well, keep in mind, this is the youth councils, you know, they, they meet nine times in a year. Well, that's what, you're missing a third of your meetings. Yes, and, and then it's a whole new board the following year. So it's not like a, you know, some of the, like, park commission, where people are on it for three, four, five years. I mean, this is a really tight timeline, and to be honest, we kind of talked them into three, because they didn't want any excuses.
Well, the three could reset every year, couldn't they? Because we reappoint every year?
No, it depends on the board and commission. So like, environmental is one year, planning commission parks are multiple years, our economic development boards, some of those terms are six years.
So should we make the language be three excused absences within one calendar year?
That's probably a better standard.
Yeah, I, I would think that's a better approach.
Yeah. I would, I guess my suggestion, City Manager O'Toole, is maybe mention this to your department heads at one of your, your upcoming meetings and see how they feel, but I do think to Mayor Protem Dillon's point, I think some uniformity in our, our bylaws for our various boards and commissions is appropriate, and I think there should be some strong language regarding absent, absenteeism, more importantly, that we strongly encourage people to participate actively and, and make a commitment to attend and, and to be involved, and if you're not able to do that, then a board and commission may, may not be for you, at least at this time.
Yep, I'm, I'm happy to communicate that to our staff liaisons and provide sort of sample language from this ordinance, from this bylaw.
And just keep us updated via your, your weekly communication, okay?
If I may?
Yes, please.
I just want to commend the Celine Youth Council for taking the lead on something like this. I think it's really great that the Youth Council's holding themselves accountable, as we should as well.
Yeah, and to be perfectly honest, I mean, this is the kind of action or the kind of thing that, it was really educational for them, to know, like, what the problem was, how to solve it, because they were just like, hey, this is what we're going to do. I'm like, wait a second, we have bylaws, and this is the process to get them changed. So it was a real, don't you agree, it was a good learning experience?
Yeah, it was, and just the aspect of accountability, and that you need to show up or say that you're, that you can't, and make sure that you don't have other activities scheduled at the same time, because that's what we were running into.
Yeah.
So I think this was a really good learning example for them, and we have, we have a really strong leadership in the Celine Youth Council.
Definitely.
Mr. Seal, one final comment before I call for the vote?
They mentioned in a calendar year. I would say in a twelve-month period, because their meetings run like September through July, or June.
Yep, good suggestion. We have a motion on the floor, simply to acknowledge receipt that has been moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamira Sulak. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve the recommended changes, removing, of course, the word resignation and replacing it with removal?
So moved?
Moved by Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Seeing no additional discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. I would ask, we're pushing ten o'clock, so please exercise some brevity here. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force Reports. If you don't have any, and if you don't have any subsequent announcements, just please pass. I'm going to start to my left and end to my right. Councilmember Rice, any Commission Committee or Task Force Report?
Councilmember Rice, any commission committee or task force reports?
From the historic district commission, we have a couple of openings, two openings on historic district commission. So, if you would like to join the commission, please fill out the application and submit to the city clerk world. Same goes for Parks Commission. We have one official vacancy on the Parks Commission, we have one more in Q. Another update is that the Curtis and Marple place sites are on order and their waiting materials, and it is taking a very long time, but as soon as the materials come in in the spring, they will begin installation once the freeze is over. I think those are the two most important things.
Very good. And as it relates to all of our boards and commissions, we do have some other people in the process who filled out applications and are going through a background check currently. We will have some other appointments to consider at our next regular meeting. But of course, as I mentioned before, if you know of anybody who'd be interested in serving on some of our boards and commissions, please have them fill out an application. And even if we can't accommodate them in the immediate future, we do hold their applications on file for a good year and a half, two years. So, we often refer to people several months subsequent to their submittal of their appropriate paperwork. Mr. Del Orco, commission committee, task force reports?
Yeah, the environmental commission met last Wednesday. We're finalizing some ideas to bring some updated technology to the vehicle charging station that's currently in lot five. I guess the one that's there now is antiquated and uses a lot more amps than ones that we're looking at. Chairperson Bruce Westlake wants to have a chance to speak before council and be added to the agenda in a presentation to pitch this idea to council and look at ways we can improve efficiency at that.
Very good. If you'd like to communicate to Mr. Westlake, I've actually been emailing him on a separate topic. But if you wanted to reach out to my office, I can find a time suitable for his, I can find a time suitable with his schedule to present to city council. If you'd like to convey that message for me. And I'd also appreciate at some point this calendar year, if the environmental commission would chime in on some ideal locations for additional charging stations. That's actually an issue I think we're, not deficient isn't the right word, but I think we're lagging a bit behind as a progressive forward-thinking community. And I think in the next twelve to sixteen months, we should be looking to install some additional charging stations elsewhere in the city.
Yeah, it's an issue we've been discussing at length in our environmental commissions, as well as we're currently vetting HOA Board Association presidents and members for language in their bylaws that prohibit solar panels and see if we can make any headway in removing some of those restrictions.
Good, excellent. Mr. Gearbaugh, any commission committee or task force reports?
Planning is canceled this week and postponed, we won't have any meetings since February. And wastewater treatment task force, city manager is working on a presentation that will come before council.
I believe we said February sixth, correct? I can confirm in my weekly communication this week.
Yep, thank you.
And speaking of forthcoming presentations, I've mentioned this before. Can we try to make sure we have from our major boards and commissions that we have annual reports in February and March? I want to move away from receiving annual reports six, seven months after the previous calendar year has eclipsed. I don't think they're particularly relevant or timely anymore. So, as I think about parks, planning, environmental, it would be great to get them in the hopper for February and March. You have nothing further, Mr. Gearbaugh? Mayor Portem Gearbaugh, or Mayor Portem Dillon, any commission committee or task force reports?
Thank you. Just very quickly, the cable commission continues to meet monthly. We do still have a vacancy that we really need to fill. So, if you would like to join us, the requirements are that you need to be a City of Celine resident and you need to be a subscriber to cable television through Comcast.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
We have a applicant who's been vetted, just didn't get done in time for this agenda. He will be on for February sixth.
Oh, fantastic.
Your vacancy will be filled.
Yay. But if there are people that are still interested, please apply. We'd love to keep your name on file. The Celine area fire board will be meeting on next Wednesday. The first, we have a work meeting at 5:00 p.m. and a regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. with numerous topics. And then last, I just wanted to make a quick statement that the mayor had asked me to reach out about the fireworks committee. The mayor had established that committee in the latter part of last year. And since that time, as the chair, my initial process was I met with various city staff about that process and talked about the costs associated with it, as well as what the commitment was from staff to have those type of events. And after those discussions, what has happened is that the city staff has stated that the city at this time does not have the labor force to assist with those matters. So, even if they were to be funded, fully funded by an outside vendor, at this point, the city does not have the police, the fire, and the D P W staff to assist with that. So, we are not looking currently at having fireworks in the 2023 calendar year. It can still say as, you know, a wish item. And I will continue to look for sponsors and should we be able to find a sponsor and the city have the adequate staffing to assist with that, it's definitely something that we can look at doing in the future.
Very good. Mr. Seale, commission committee or task force reports?
Thank you, Your Honor. This morning, the Celine area senior citizens council board met, trying to push for more membership. If you're age forty-five and above, you're welcome, welcome to join. We'd be happy to have you. Forty-five and above are seniors in training. In the second, as I mentioned, the cemetery board is going to meet again this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. Right over here in the council workroom. We're going to have a representative from Flesen Vanderbrink come and explain to us what the options are available for repairing the cemetery wall along Monroe Street in further detail so we can make an informed decision about what exactly is the best one to recommend to council.
Very good. Mr. Kamira Sulak, any commission committee or task force reports?
Yeah, just real quick, you all pretty much know what the Celine youth council has been working on. But we also have one vacancy where we could use one more member, so just like most of the rest, just heads up.
Very good. Let's transition to reports and announcements. Councilmember Rice, do you have any?
I do not.
Councilmember Del Orco?
I do. I was able to take advantage last week of an opportunity to speak with both Senator Jeff Irwin and Representative Felicia Braback about issues around funding of our wastewater treatment plant and government assistance. Both of them articulated to me that never before has Lansing been in this position, that there's a rare and unique opportunity to make funding requests because of a budget surplus. And they're all kind of trying to figure out what to do up there. So, this, we need to strike while iron's hot, and we need to get in there and make some requests. Felicia is obviously very supportive of any and all information coming forward to her. And Jeff seemed to articulate some confusion around where we were in terms of what the ask is, where the federal request was. I'm certainly, he was certainly excited to learn more about the opportunities. He wanted to know specifically whether this was a supplemental request or an earmarked line budget item in the upcoming recommendations for the governor's recommendation on the budget. So, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to schedule an opportunity to get some coordinated effort with Senator Irwin, Felicia Braback, and possibly Debbie Dingell as well, to get everybody on the same page with federal and state legislature to figure out what we can do and get some help with that.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Gearbaugh, any reports or announcements?
Not announcement, we had mentioned this. As again, we saw this week and a number of concerns regarding these notifications that people are receiving in terms of inspections related to past, if we could have a update on that and understand exactly where we at. The auditors had said to me that this was all resolved, so I'm a bit concerned that we just need to understand what's happening with any past organization that we use to resolve this and where we really stand on it.
So, unless you have an update right now, I was going to say next meeting if we could get some information on it.
Yeah, I'd rather give you some time.
I do have an update. I know the answer to your question, so to speak. So, there is some delay in sending out these letters. We've ceased operations with Carlyle Wardman in terms of, these are really the last of the last permits that we have yet to close out. And just for the public's benefit, if you receive one of these letters, the inspection is already paid for. So, there's no additional fee, there's no additional cost. There are old permits that weren't properly inspected. Perhaps your contractor in 2005 didn't follow through with the project, but didn't notify the city and, you know, didn't get these expiration emails or letters sent to them. So, it's really just to close out as an administrative purpose, to perform the inspection that was paid for, you know, ten years ago, sometimes fifteen years ago, sometimes twenty years ago. So, even if you replaced your water heater since then, it's totally okay, just let us know. If we have one on file, we'll just close out administratively. There's really no, it's not designed to be burdensome to any homeowners. We're trying to be very flexible in the scheduling of those inspections as well.
And then the one only other thing is, as Ms. Dillon had mentioned earlier about our township islands that are still in the city, I would like to see how we're going to proceed on addressing that issue fairly quickly. So, whatever we can do in terms of legally approaching what concerns, I've heard some individuals still make statements out of the township that they will no way release those to us. But at this point in time, the benefit that those islands are receiving significantly impacts our residents and our tax base. So, it's time to figure out a solution.
Ms. Dillon, any reports or announcements?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Seale?
Not at this time.
Mr. Kamira Sulak?
Not at this time.
City manager O'Toole, I had asked previously for you to address two. And then councilmember Dillon, I think you had some initial thoughts on the Maple Ave crosswalks, which you can respond to. Can you provide a public update on the tentative, or the previously, the previous tentative sales agreement with Loom for lot 28?
So, the developers in that situation let us know that they would be terminating the deal. They did not feel that the lot was economically feasible for them any longer. When they originally conceived of the project, they had foreseen that the development would include their retail portion up front and some sort of mixed-use development in the rear. Additional due diligence on the property showed that there would be some challenges developing that rear portion. It's not impossible, but it certainly adds to the financial equation. So, ultimately, they did make the decision to terminate the deal, which means now that property will not be used for a marijuana purpose. It is effectively zoned out, so another marijuana user could not come in and take that deal.
And just to confirm, the necessary documents to terminate that tentative deal were executed by my office today. The paperwork is signed over to the clerk, so we have done what we need to do to close that out. I believe from a conversation that you and I had on Friday, it was your opinion that staff, yourself, perhaps Mr. Herrington, work through M E D C or some other outlets to aggressively market that parcel and to make sure that potential developers know that we would be very eager to work with somebody who proposed a dynamic mixed-use project for that site.
Correct. I actually recommend that the city pursues a more formal request for proposal or request for qualifications process where we outline in documentation, one, what we know about the parcel, and two, what our vision for it is, so that we are better aligned with the developer at the end of the day, rather than waiting for someone to come to us with a project.
I think that's an excellent idea. Does anybody on the council object to that approach? No, okay, very good. I had previously communicated to, oh, sorry, excuse me, apart from lot 28 and the former Loom proposal, I had also communicated to council that I was going to be asking staff to provide an update on staffing levels at the Celine Police Department. This is an issue that the city manager and I have discussed on several occasions. And then earlier today, we met and had an hour-long meeting with Police Chief Radzik. Do you want to provide council and the community an update on that discussion?
Yeah, some positive news on that front. So, we do have three current vacancies within our police department. We are very close to finalizing the agreement on sponsoring a cadet for the academy. The academy will start in May, which means that that individual would be available to start service in August. In that sponsorship form, we pay for the academy and then they get a small wage for the hours they're at the academy.
Okay, stop you real quick, city manager O'Toole, those dollars are in the budget, does not require a budget amendment approved by council?
Correct, yes, we had budgeted for at least one participant in the academy this year. We also have a traditional hire that's in the background now that has private experience. And if the background is all cleared, we would expect them to start as early as February sometime. And then we have other candidates who are earlier in the process. And the one thing I'll say is interest in working for our police department, I think compared to other areas, does remain relatively strong. But we are, we're not interested in lowering our standards. We do have a fair number of people that do not clear the background check and we don't many, any exceptions on that front.
Very good, thank you. And then councilmember Dillon, did you, as a courtesy, I want to provide you the opportunity to address the matter first. You were the council member who recommended that the Maple Ave crosswalk be discussed tonight. Would you like to begin that discussion, then we'll have city manager O'Toole respond?
Yes, thank you. I believe it was last week, I don't know, time is sort of a bit of a blur right now. There was a public town hall regarding the Maple Avenue upcoming construction project. And there were quite a few residents from the Maple Oaks subdivision that had shown up. And they had asked about the crosswalk, sidewalks, things like that about the project. And they had asked about having an enhanced crosswalk versus just one that's striped, meaning possibly lights, beacons, whatever the case may be. Mr. Gearbaugh and I were both in attendance at that meeting. And we both had a recollection that when the Maple Oaks project was in development, that was a topic that was talked about quite a bit based on the type of development that was, the residents that would be living there, the proximity to the library, the middle school, the fact that there was not actually a continuous sidewalk along the east side of Maple and such. And so, I would like to continue that conversation again and look back at our development agreements and our past correspondence regarding that topic and see what we do have available. I know there is an interest from residents for it. And I think the city manager is going to address that aspect of it. Before I move on to that, the other piece to this project that I would like to talk about or just make mention of and open the door so that we can have a discussion about is that there will be sidewalks added on the east side. There are, I believe, three properties between the Maple Oaks neighborhood and the Maple Cove neighborhood. And we are proposing changes that will include sidewalks there. The one thing that we have not talked about is whether we will be looking for those residents to contribute to the sidewalks, meaning assessing those properties. I think that's something that we've talked about in the past and whether we need to kind of step up and step into that and ask residents to, you know, to help us in completing, you know, the walkability in our community. I do think that it's time, it's going to be very difficult to have the city install sidewalks on one side of a subdivision and then on the other side, ask a commercial business to install their own and pay for it. So, I want to make sure that we are looking holistically at sidewalks and we're not just picking and choosing and we decide on the process. So, that concluding, if the city manager would like to talk about how residents address crosswalk issues?
Certainly. So, the process for any resident that's interested in either seeing crosswalk changes or additional signage, like special signage for their neighborhood, having a traffic study done, is to go through our online portal, the citizen reporting tool. And I will recommend using a desktop application or an actual web browser instead of your phone, because we're still working through some tweaks with how it displays in mobile. So, you definitely get a better experience going through a computer. But fill out the application or the information in that, specifically for crosswalks, there's a section that's public works, street signs and crossings, that would be what this is in reference to. Those will actually go directly to my mail. And I use that as a trigger to assemble our traffic review team, which is myself, the chief of police and city engineer. We look at the request, we'll decide at that point if it warrants review by our outside engineering consultants, T I A. We will request the review by them and then implement the recommendations. Typically, the process to get through all of that does take about, I would say, between two to four months, just depending on the workload of T I A and when they can turn around. And then from there, if there are recommendations that require expenditure funds or ordering of equipment, a new timeline would be put in place.
Very good. Gearbaugh?
Considering that, you know, the Maple Road project is coming up and there was a lot of lot of discussion about this when the first Maple Oaks was being proposed, the concerns with that, does that mean that this cannot be included in this project if we have to do a full traffic study and everything?
I mean, I don't see why it couldn't get tacked on towards the end of the project, but it's also a fairly easy project for us to do independently.
And that's, we've actually just installed the first enhanced crosswalk on Woodland, and VPW staff did do that. I think to add it to Vertiteris contract, when this is a specialty that's not Vertiteris, we would be paying an extraordinary amount of money. So it would be something that we could absolutely tackle separately, I think, from the larger contract that we have with Vertiteris.
So what kind of timeline would that be if you're saying separate of this project?
I do want to set expectations. We don't have a formal recommendation from a certified traffic engineer that that type of crossing is what's recommended. So step one of the process is for that review to be conducted.
And just looking at a timeline, I understand that, it's just that our former councils were very concerned with that crosswalk at the time. Of course, this is a mid-crosswalk, there is really no other crosswalk to get to the library when you go up the east side and all that. So for me, definitely getting this information as soon as possible and getting this in place. We did not do this study unfortunately with what happened with the school, which may have been able to be resolved a different way, but because of outside pressures were put on it, I understand this is a similar type of situation. But this clearly had discussion by council three or four years ago, so.
And planning.
And planning, which was really one of the things that was going to be part of those plans, so. Just to give some history.
Can we start that process?
I think for timeline, yeah, we have plenty of time, because ideally, this would occur after construction was completed, because we are tearing up the road. We are, the road construction right now proposes to just restripe it as is. So I, and since construction is proposed to be completed a whole year from now, I think there's plenty of time to do this study concurrently with it and have a recommendation well before we're done with construction out there.
Even if a recommendation would be like an island that's on North Ann Arbor Street at Water Works, we'd have to tear out existing, I mean, that's my, I, there's a couple of different options.
My understanding is that the request right now is for an enhanced crosswalk.
Well, whatever would be the safest, I think, is a concern, because disallowable citizens and individuals and knowing as much traffic that comes across that road is a concern. But again, that'll be part of the new traffic discussion.
So, yes, we can get the process of requesting the traffic study. I would still strongly encourage the residents to please submit it through the online system, because we use that as a tool to track the progress of various requests and repairs and projects.
And it helps staff and council make policy decisions or encourages staff, rather, to make a recommendation in terms of the allocation of resources or funds to council if there's sort of a groundswell of constituents' residents who identify a deficiency and a solution. Let me grab Councilmember Rice, and then I'll jump back to Mr. Seo on the issue of Maple Road crosswalk.
So this question is for City Manager O'Toole, and we've talked about this process in separate conversations. So the process for citizens to request something take place is to use the online tool. Do we have an accessibility, you know, secondary option for folks? Say, this community doesn't have the ability to use the online tool, or they have some questions about the online tool, can they call someone in your office? Can they reach out to someone and have someone walk them through what exactly?
Yeah, absolutely. I think any member of our staff, our front desk staff, if they want to come in personally, this is easy for us to pull up on our computers, we can ask the questions. We really want everything to filter through this portal, because we use it as a sort of a backend work order system to track our progress and to make sure that projects are being properly assigned.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point to make to the community, that this is sort of, not only is it a project tracking tool, it's an efficiency tool. So submitting these types of things through the website helps with the efficiency of getting your project, you know, recognized by city staff. It's a much quicker way and an easier way to track rather than email. But, and we have discussed this before, reaching out to your council person, to someone that you are, you know, in communication with is a perfect first step. And then we will continue to recommend that folks use this tool, and now the city manager has also recommended if you need help using the tool to contact the city manager's office. And I just want to communicate that to the community, that this isn't a tool that the city manager's office is pushing people off to, it's a tool that's actually going to benefit you to use so that they can keep track of your project and your request.
Mr. Seo?
At some point, there was talk of Maple Oaks expanding beyond the railroad tracks to the north. Has that died?
I don't think, I wouldn't say died, but I would say it's dormant.
Okay.
Maybe it's in semantics, but I don't think it's completely dead, but it's not showing a lot of signs of life.
All right. Thank you.
Just one last statement. We had the South Ann Arbor Street traffic study done. If we could have that at one of our meetings to discuss, because we might as well deal with those results somewhere.
I anticipate that those results will be discussed and the solution presented as part of our capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Fair enough. Teshia, City Engineer Humphris, thank you. Moving right along then, discontinuation of passport services. This was an item that was discussed at a recent meeting, and City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, we're going to do some additional investigation and report back. Who would like to begin? Clerk Royal?
Yes, I contacted the passport agency, and we had discussed having passports one Saturday a month, and that is not allowed. You either are a full-time passport agency or you're not. So in order to continue, we would have to do this all, every day, all day, or whenever it was required. So what I'm recommending is that we discontinue it now until the clerk's office has more staffing, and then we can review it.
Okay. Just for council's edification, you have a part-time deputy clerk who will be starting when?
Hopefully sometime in February.
Okay.
So a moratorium?
No, because we can't do a moratorium. We have to either, we have to be tested, and we have to have an annual audit of our, there's a lot that goes into being a passport agent. It's not just like we can't just stop. We would have to restart a whole program again. It'd have to come back to council to get a resolution to allow people to be passport agents.
I'll get everybody on this one. And again, if people don't want to offer comments, if you'd like to be a bit more thoughtful and revisit this in a couple of weeks based on new information, that's fine, but I want to begin to my left with Councilmember Rice, if you have thoughts on the continuation of passport services or whether you support the recommendation to discontinue for the foreseeable future.
I support the recommendation to discontinue after listening to the last presentation from City Clerk Royal and understanding that most of the folks coming to receive these services are not actually Saline residents. I do have a caveat to my approval of this, my yay for this, if you will. I think that it is very important that we communicate this properly, so let's not just communicate that it's being discontinued, let's give people options. Here's where else you can go, you know, things of that nature.
Correct.
Of course, the closest one being the U.S. Post Office, but, you know, maybe that's not the one that we highlight.
The county does them too, so we have that information out there, so.
Does Pittsfield Township do it?
Not, no.
Okay.
They have a passport day, but that's where they take people around to see what they do at the building. It's not actual passports.
Mr. Del Orco, any thoughts on this or questions?
I'm going to defer for the moment.
Okay. Mr. Girba?
Is there any required termination timeline for the, with the government, that we have to give them any kind of notice or whatever?
We would have to redo our testing by the end of January in order to continue. So if we do not, if we do not update our testing, we will not be allowed to do passports after January.
So we're saying termination in the next seven days?
Correct.
Seven days, okay. That was just my recommendation that we'd have a cutoff date, but it sounds like we've already got one established for us. I have no problem eliminating, I don't want to continue providing a service for most of the outside community. The only other question I have is now that we know that we're going to free up 200 hours at a cost of $7,000, what do we anticipate those $200, $200 hours being directed towards? And so, and the cost benefit of now redirecting that effort?
The deputy clerk used to be a full-time position. My new deputy is only going to be a part-time position, so it's only 24 hours a week at the most. And so there's, that's one of the reasons why we are not looking at continuing the passports. There's other things between the cemetery and permits. I'm doing daycare, I'm doing liquor licenses, there's all other kinds of permits that reapply each year that we have to continue on. So without the deputy, those are all coming to me.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know how we were going to make up for that loss and the benefit of it. Thank you.
One quick question. How, if you explained this two weeks ago, and I'm being forgetful, my apologies, how difficult is it to reactivate the program if a year and a half from now, two years, we decide it's warranted?
We would have to go through the testing, and we would have to come to council to get a resolution to have the people who are passport agents approved by council.
And how difficult and time-consuming is the testing?
Depending on how many times you have to take it. It's online, so it's not that difficult. So I'd say a week or two would probably, probably the longest would be waiting for council to me.
Okay. And recertification can only be done in January, or could that process be initiated any time during the calendar year?
No, we can re-initiate any time during the year. It's just that every January, you have to retake your test to be recertified.
Okay. In light of that information and in keeping with the comments I made two weeks ago, for the time being, based on staff's recommendation, I would be amenable to discontinuing. I would like a sort of a formal commitment that we would reevaluate this in a six-month time or a 12-month period to see if there's demand and interest in reestablishing the service. And to Councilmember Rice's point, if in fact we will forfeit the opportunity to issue passports or process passports this January, then we really need to do some aggressive messaging. One, to communicate that as of February 1st, it's no longer offered, and then two, to provide a list of entities, organizations that provide the service with a strong emphasis on those that have a good record of customer service.
Yeah, I have, in my notes, I will have Pierre General's Massey work on a press release tomorrow morning to hopefully get out by end of day that describes just that.
Hold tight, because I don't quite have a majority yet. I got three of them, so give us a second. I might get to four.
I've got a good sense for the way these things happen.
But I don't, yeah. My political background says count your eggs once they hatch. Councilmember Dillon, your thoughts on continuing or maintaining the service?
So my opinion really has not changed. I'm not actually in favor of discontinuing a service that we provide to our community. I think that at this time, it's the little things that actually matter. It is something that is utilized by residents. It may not be the majority, but it is utilized. And I guess what I'm trying to understand is, it's my understanding that we have four trained passport personnel. So are we not able, between the four of them, to find, like, where we can rotate?
I appreciate what you're saying. I think one of the challenges is we demand a lot of our staff, and when the question of, you know, what are we going to do with that extra time comes up, it is difficult for me to not smile a little, because they don't have the time. We're asking them to do more work than they have time in the day. So if we can free up 40 minutes of their day, there are essential priorities that their time needs to be spent on. Yes, I could, you know, force those four individuals on a rotating schedule to be passport agents. Is that the best use of their time? They're highly skilled individuals. No, it is not.
Okay. I disagree in that it's not about a skill level, it's about a customer service aspect for me, is where I see it, and that's the piece that I, I'm really, at a time when we know we have to make definitive cuts due to costs, this is just a very minor piece. And the other piece that I can't make kind of fit, and I, is that I know that when I've contacted the post office, they do, you can't just walk in. They have set times in which they take appointments. And so I would hope that we could do something like that. And I know that you're saying that you've got different information, but that's the process that they're using. So did they get different information too? And I just want to understand that.
I can only articulate the information that's available to our organization directly from the Federal Passport Agency.
Thank you.
That's clear. Thank you, Councilmember Dillon. Mr. Seo, your thoughts?
I support the staff recommendation. I agree that it's probably a nice, nice thing to do, but at some point, you have to make best use of your time with your employees you've got. So I support the staff recommendation, and in addition to preparing a press release, I would say, please have a handout sheet that you can give them with perhaps the name of the agency, the address, and the telephone number, so that they can make proper arrangements elsewhere.
Good idea. Thank you. Mr. Kamaresulak?
Yes, I also support the staff's recommendation. Best use of time, and if more, if more people in our community in Saline were using the services, I might feel, I might feel a little differently. And I wonder with the post office, if maybe since they're a different, you know, like federal agency, that they can play by different rules, but I think that's the best decision for us to make, is to suspend, and since we could start it up at a different time, that we can always reevaluate, like the mayor said.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's comments. I have five members who are in favor of the staff recommendation, so I think you know how to proceed. Let's transition now to curb stop ownership. This is an item that Mr. Harrington asked to be added to tonight's agenda. Mr. Harrington?
This was brought to code review, I think, in October. Engineer Humphris was also present. It's an ordinance that states that the homeowner is responsible for their water and sewer line from the road to their home. It's very unique. Most cities own the curb stop, per Mrs. Teshia's memo that I included in there. There's a couple of benefits and a couple of detriments for, there's a couple of benefits to owning it, and there are several detriments to not owning it. So to us, it seems logical to maybe pursue this ordinance change, but we thought we would bring it as a discussion item first and then draft the formal ordinance with legal review afterwards. So essentially, the city doesn't own the means to turn off water to the house, but Director Searls and Teshia might be able to more clearly articulate what the specific issues are with that. So I would invite them to the podium.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure exactly what's in the packet, but I think Ben covered the, and it was so long ago, I don't even know what I wrote in it, honestly, because we've done a lot since October. I do remember going to the code review meeting, and I know the definite intent of what was in the memo, and it's been articulated. I do think we're unique in a community that doesn't own the curb stops. A couple of, I think, benefits for us as a municipality is we need to have a spot to be able to control the water, turn on and off the water in the curb stop is the location to do that. The curb stop, just for, it's the actual shut-off valve that's located typically between the sidewalk and the road, and that's, and it's called the curb, it's near the curb, is why it's the curb stop.
It's underground, though.
It's the actual, yes, the actual valve is underground, and what is, there's a stem that comes up to the surface, that's how we actually can control the valve, and you typically will see it, something about this big, it's painted blue if you call it a mistig, that's about this big around, it's painted, that's the access to the ultimate valve that's down, because, yes, your water remains five and a half feet deep to prevent freezing. I think one reason, that's one benefit. Another benefit is that our current ordinance requires that a homeowner digs under our roads to fix leaky curb stops and also discourages a homeowner to fix a leaky curb stop because it's so expensive. And we, if that to anybody's benefit, to have water leaking out of our sewer system. So I'm not sure what other benefits I outlined in the memo, but those are a few off the top of my head.
When I can speak to the building ones, oftentimes when people are repairing their leads or otherwise excavating, they're wondering why the city won't turn off their water, which it requires a specialized piece of equipment to actually operate that valve. So the benefit to the city owning it is that we have the ability to turn on and off their water for them. They don't have to rely on a private contractor charging them an exorbitant price to do something that I don't believe is really all that difficult for us to do with our specialized equipment.
That's true. Yeah, the Vector truck you were talking about earlier is one of those pieces of equipment that we can repair a curb stop in a matter of an hour that might cost a homeowner thousands of dollars to contract out.
So basically, excuse me, City Manager or City Engineer Humphris, you are basically asking city council to empower code review to begin to modify and draft a revised ordinance?
Well, code review just suggested that we change the ordinance. I'm just confirming that that's the intent of the council. The council is interested in changing the ordinance. There's not a clear streamlined process for how we're proposing these things, so I'm bringing it to you as a discussion item. We can discuss it and then take a clear direction from there.
Let me, we'll start with questions, or if you want to just jump to your opinion on this matter, that would be fine as well. Councilmember Rice, any thoughts on this?
I was part of the
Uh, I was part of the conversation as a citizen on the co-ordinance committee, and I think that your Humphries's assessment of this issue is valid. Um, one of the things that I want to point out to the community is that this actually is, um, going to save money in the long term for the homeowner. Um, one question I did have with that, because we just ran into this, um, in my own home, is, so when you have a plumbing permit and you need the water to be shut off, um, at the street, will we, the citizens be incurring that $100 turn on and off fee, or is the city going to absorb that since the city owns it now?
That's a good question.
I don't think we, wait, so the issue is even though the city turns it on and off, it's a matter of, I think it's a matter of liability to us in case we damage it because we don't own it effectively. Um, but I imagine the staffing situation will stay the same. It's more of a charge for time and services than anything else. Um, so if, if it benefits them, I think that that's a positive.
And I do think it's typical that municipalities do have a small fee for exactly turning on and off because it does take time to do so.
Um, that was clear. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Um, Councilmember Del Oroco, your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I was also on the code review. And if this is evaluated, I think this is a step the city needs to take because there's just too much ambiguity over where the liability lies and who would be responsible in, in the event that, um, repairs needed to be made or, um, that there was a problem. Uh, I think we've already confronted some of these aspects with the water meter change out where gate valves weren't working and water meters needed to be shut off. Was that done by the contractor or was this, um, enforced by the city?
The meter is interior to the building versus this is at the street? If, if that's what you're asking?
No, I mean, haven't there been cases where we needed to shut water off at the curb?
Oh, oftentimes, Jim, we had to do a lot of, the contractor had to do a lot of line freezing.
Right.
The, the valve box itself that covers that, um, shut off wasn't always up in good, good working order. A homeowner just doesn't own the equipment to keep them, keep them working well.
Yeah, all, all the more reason why we need to move this forward.
They couldn't even find ours in our yard.
Oh, wow. And maybe I can also clarify.
You mean, they couldn't find yours?
Yeah, I just remember a number of gate valves being inoperable.
And I mean, just a, just a side advantage, we, we are obligated by Eagle to get a, get an actual verification of these service lines. We're actually gonna be excavating these, not our stuff, but we're required to verify. We're gonna be excavating them, and they're not ours. But we have to. So, anyway, we've gotta do about 307 a year to get our 7% or something like that.
I'm sorry, Mayor. No, I just wanted to see if I can get consensus here real quick, Mr. Harrington. So hang tight with me. Uh, Mr. Del Oroco, that was clear. I appreciate it. Mr. Girba, any thoughts on this matter?
Just a couple of comments.
Please.
That rationale was exactly it. I was gonna ask the city manager to do it because the concern is we're gonna have to do that, so we might as well absorb it now. And I also know in the past where my valve failed and I had to pay for it, and really it probably should have been the city because it was a defective valve. Um, question is, of course, one thing, this will eliminate the need for the insurance? Because currently we have an insurance thing?
No, no, the, homeowners should still retain that insurance if they have it and then they choose to have it, because they'll still own from the curb box to the house.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it paid for the other aspect going out. So I, whatever, just making --
It pays for water and sewer, too.
Yes, both service lines.
Well, that's the other question. Sewer lines, um, I know of an individual that sold a home, they had to repair the sewer line all the way out to the manhole. Is that still the situation?
In my experience, that is more typical than not, that the sewer lead is owned all the way to the main. Uh, what I would have expected to see is something in the ordinance that says the public works or a contractor of the public works would dig in the roadway. Um, but Ben did adjust the road bond to cover us a little bit, to make us, protect us a little bit from, um, the roads not being backfilled properly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we clarified what sewer's different than water and water --
The biggest, the biggest difference is we need to control the water, right? By ordinance, if they didn't pay the water bill, we would go out and turn them off.
And, and this is all connections, commercial, industrial, and residential?
Correct. Yes.
Um, I'm supportive of that.
Okay, very good. Ms. Dillon, Mayor Protim Dillon?
So my question is, and I think it's the same as Councilmember Rice, is, is that, like, at my house, we have no idea where the curb stop is. DPW actually has had a very difficult time finding it. So at some point, if you're taking ownership of that, will you kind of find it, mark it, bring it to the surface? Um, is that something that, you know, I need to worry about? Um?
If, if DPW is responsible for those curb stops, it would be our responsibility to find them. Yes.
Okay. It, it had just come up at one point, and it was a similar situation where they, mist dig was there, and they're like, we're not sure what's going on here, but we've got one, we just can't find it.
And I, and I would have to, I mean, you brought up mist dig. How was a resident part of the mist dig system? Right? That's how unusual it is. Right?
So, so I, yeah, I'm in favor. If, if this is the support, uh, that, that you think that the city needs.
I think so.
That's fine.
Very good. Mr. Seal?
I agree with him. I think it's, uh, I think it's a necessary step. A friend of mine had his water line fail and ended up having to dig out into the road. And that was a huge expense. At the time, it was properly repaired and the curb was replaced and everything else. So.
Mr. Gerechulak, thank you. Mr. Seal?
Uh, yes, I, I support this initiative. I think it's pretty clear from what you, uh, the information you've provided, that, uh, you should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous?
Uh, I just wanted to talk about process for a second, because that was brought up earlier. Um, so for zoning-related ordinances that are borne out of code review, I take them to planning.
Right.
And then planning goes to here. Uh, this is not a zoning-related ordinance. I just brought it to a discussion item.
Yep.
Because I thought that would be --
Yep. And, and as the members of the code review have articulated, including Chairperson Tahar, they like to receive direction from council prior to delving into an ordinance change. So.
For sure.
I think we, we accomplished that this evening, at least as it relates to this particular matter. Um, our last item is the waste management contract, and I, if I recall correctly, uh, my colleague, Mr. Del Oroco, requested that this be added. So I will defer to him first.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, as a matter of public awareness, I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the community understands that the city has an ongoing contract relationship with waste management for, um, the removal of your refuse, both landfill and recycle. And that is subsidized through our public tax dollars. So by no means should anyone be receiving a separate bill for the leasing of the 96-gallon refuse bins for either your, um, landfill use or your recycle use. And, um, I myself have been receiving some bills every year, so I wanted to make a, an announcement that if there's anyone that's receiving these bills, that it's, we should, you should come forward, let us know, so we can make the necessary, uh, communication with waste management to stop those bills from coming.
Very good. Mr. DPW Director Searls, excuse me, since the waste management contract falls under your auspices, is there anything you'd like to add to this issue?
Right, um, there is no charge for the initial cart. I would think that there's potential for some exceptions where people have on their own asked for an additional cart. That would be outside of the contract. But the contract covers that, that cart to be at your house without an extra bill.
Both the recycle and?
And the, uh, solid waste, trash. Yep.
Uh, DPW Director Searls, it's, I'll preface, it's been some time, but I had received some complaints probably in the, um, uh, spring of 2022 regarding the difficulty in having, um, waste management retrieve a large item, which they will retrieve. You have to call ahead. Have you or your subordinates received any inquiries regarding, uh, regarding that in, in recent months?
Well, I, I don't remember one of those specific, Mayor, but I do know we've had issues over time with, with specific things. Um, something is like the trash cans here not getting picked up, uh, the Christmas trees not getting picked up. I will say that I didn't, I didn't want to come up here and get beat up myself, so the municipal rep from waste management hung out all night with us. Um, we do have a new route supervisor. Um, we do have a new municipal rep, and we've had a little bit of changeover. I believe waste management has had a few driver changes. So we have periodically, with those, with those challenges, we do come up with issues in service. Um, I will say it's been excellent as far as getting response to get the problems taken care of. Um, I met, uh, I mean, we, we had the Christmas trees not being picked up issue come up. We had a bill that shouldn't be a bill come up, and we, within a couple days, had a meeting set up. Um, so.
Can you remind the public, uh, when is the last day for Christmas tree retrieval?
Last week?
Advertised or unadvertised? Um, I, I think, I think, um, Chantel, um, Chantel?
Yeah, why don't you, Chantel, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't acknowledge.
I think she owes us one.
God bless you for staying from 7 o'clock till almost 11:00. We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Would you care to make a, a comment for the public record?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so my name is Chantel Alphorus. I'm the new public sector representative for waste management, covering primarily the southeast Michigan region, which includes , uh, the city of Celine here. Um, my district manager for Whitmore Lake Halling, which also handles, uh, the city of Celine contract, was here with me, but he's got a little bit of a further drive than, than I do. So, um, I sent him packing so I could hang out. Um, but yeah, it's been, it's been fantastic working with Larry thus far. Um, you know, I know Larry is relatively new to his role. I'm, I'm new to my role. Um, and, you know, more than anything, I just want to reemphasize the fact that, you know, we're here for the community. We recognize that issues are going to come up. Um, we certainly don't want them to come up, but my number is available. Um, and I, I want folks to feel like they can pick up the phone and, and call and let us know if there's something that's not getting resolved. Um, I'm here to, to help expedite those.
Appreciate it. Um, Chantel, why don't you hang tight? There may be some questions that are best addressed by you. Let me start with, uh, Mayor Protim Dillon, and then I'll jump to Councilmember Rice.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask about the Christmas trees. Um, did, have we made a final pass through the city and have they been picked up?
They, they were picked up this, when was it? Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
Uh, they made a circuit of the city. They should all be gone. In my travels, I did not see any out there that were left, um, which, there was quite a few.
Fantastic. Um, and then on the waste management topic, but sort of a, a side note, one of the things that we talked about a while back was our recycling and how we were paying for it. It was my understanding that at one point we were paying by tonnage. And then you had said we were paying by cartload. Have we been able to clarify that?
It is by tonnage.
It is by tonnage.
It is by tonnage.
So that really needs to be addressed in the agreement with the schools?
Yes.
Okay.
I promise to come back and research the contract and come back with the right information.
Okay, I appreciate that. And when residents have issues, their trash got missed, um, whatever the case may be, um, what is the best avenue for them? Should they go through our portal? Should they contact waste management? Where, what, what do you want them to do?
That, that's a tough one. I, I believe it's probably best just to bring it to DPW first if your trash was missed. If your trash was missed, you let us know. Unfortunately, it's an extra step, but we then know if there's a problem, right? An, an individual, or is this something that's growing? We can kind of track it through our office if we need to talk to the route supervisor.
I, not, not to correct you, I would recommend we do have a, a specific link for that, um, on, or an issue for that on our online citizen reporting tool. So we can, we can track it through there. Yeah. I, I have to bring some staff along with the technology changes, too, so.
It's late.
It's really late.
Very good. Anything else, Mayor Protim Dillon?
Uh, no, I think that that, that'll be it.
Very good. Uh, let me jump to Councilmember Rice, and then I'll jump to Mr. Girba, and then Mr. Seal, and then we'll close this one out.
That actually answered my question. That was the question that I had. Oh, and I do want to point out for the community that, again, the reason to use the portal is the tracking system that it gives. And, um, Director Searls gave us some information the other day that he can also map these requests. So if he, he can see if there's like a specific pocket of the community that didn't get picked up, rather than go out, come back, go out, come back, go out, come back. So it's really more efficient to submit these things through the portal.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Girba, and then Mr. Seal?
Just a helpful suggestion. I know, um, individuals that have contacted directly waste management, customer service, and were directed maybe kind of in circles. So whatever we can do to, um, help, either through directing them towards our portal or whatever, I think will be helpful. Thank you.
And maybe Chantel can speak on this. The customer service rep at waste management may just not know our contract. There's multiple contracts under that, so sometimes that, oops, sometimes that little runaround was unintentional. They were just thinking of another similar contract.
Thank you.
We are, though, taking steps to address some of the customer experience issues that have been reported. Um, I know wait time is, is of concern. Um, one of the ways that we are working toward tackling that is by rolling out, um, uh, an automated self-service. Um, so we're kind of piloting that across a multitude of our communities. Um, we liken it similar to an Amazon service where you would be able to go in, um, you create an account. Um, from there, you could report things like missed pickups, or I've got a broken wheel, or I've, I've got different things like that. Um, so it would allow the customer to have direct access, uh, to someone and, and kind of manage some of those on their own. Also, if there's something, say, um, my trash is picked up at tunnel 2 a.m. on the nose every day, I know that. Um, they can go in, they can actually track the trucks and see where the truck is, so they can see, oh, it looks like the truck is a little behind, or the truck was running ahead today. Um, we're really focusing on that technology component to empower our communities to, um, have more resources at their fingertips.
Sounds very promising. Kind of like our dashboards that we're addressing and training to bring forward. So great.
I'm not copying their, their fleet manager.
Mr. Seal, you had a comment or question?
Chantel, a few years ago when I moved, uh, I, I took some extra items to a yard out on Jackson Road. Is that the Waste Management Yard?
I would have to double check the address. I, I don't believe it is. Uh, I'm still learning all of the addresses. I'm month four. Um, but if, if that, I would be happy to look into that and connect with you afterward, just to confirm if that is indeed WM.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
If there's nothing else, we thank you both. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please, yep.
If, City Manager O'Toole, if we could have, uh, this added to the FYI, as was suggested by Mayor Protim.
Yeah, I've already shared with PR General Massey, so she's got it on her docket to include in the next FYI.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further to be brought up under the discussion portion of tonight's agenda, we come to public comments, uh, we come to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. Any, uh, citizen, uh, person, excuse me, may come forward at this time, may comment or question on an item that appeared, uh, no, that's incorrect. You can talk about anything you want to at this stage. My apologies. Uh, comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? You may discuss whatever it is, uh, you feel, uh, inclined to discuss. Please come forward. You just come forward to the podium and, uh, speak into the microphone, and you will have three minutes once you begin.
Too short for the mic.
Pull it down. No, it's adjustable.
Okay. Um, my name is Ruth Janes, and I live on the Maple Oaks Court. And I just want to come to say, one of the reasons I attended was I do have concerns about, uh, the crosswalk at the intersection of Maple Oaks Court and Maple Road. I'd like to see a traffic light there. My problem is that with the high, with the school, um, the traffic with the school in the morning for the pick, for the drop off and the pickup, it's just so very crowded. It's hard to get out of there and make a turn. Um, I'm hoping with the road construction that they're going to do, that they maybe can, um, redirect where the parents go to pick up their kids in the school system. I just, it, it's really crowding Maple Road. That's all I can say. So, but my preference would be to get a three-way traffic sign, but I would be happy with a enhanced crosswalk, too, because that intersection's very dangerous. So that's really what I came to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments?
I'm gonna wait till next meeting.
Thank you, Mary.
Two minutes now. Uh, Clerk Roy, we didn't receive any written comments. Uh, Ruth, we appreciate, uh, those remarks. As the city manager indicated, please have, um, your neighbors and please, um, take time to fill out that citizen portal so we have your contact information and we have your thoughts about safety, um, and more specifically a crosswalk on North Maple Road. Um, I would ask the city manager, um, in fact, I, I had helped facilitate the meeting, although my schedule did not permit me to attend. Chief Radzik did meet with school officials, I believe, in the late summer of 2022 to discuss, um, pickup and drop off of students, uh, at the Celine Middle School, and how that creates constant congestion at both the beginning and end of the school year. That was something they were going to evaluate, and I would think they were gonna evaluate further subsequent to the bond proposal passing. But if we could get an update on where they're at in that process, because the status quo of having a litany of --